Hi, Lindsay.
Hello. Okay, there we go. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Uh, thank you for being here today, Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, uh, for the regular session of Coconial County Board of Supervisors, or Directors of Coconial County Flood Control District and Coconial County Public Health Services District. So we are, uh, beginning our, our, uh, regular session. If we could please start with call to order, District One.
District One, President Accounted For, Patrice Horstman. Thank you all for being here. And for those, uh, uh, out there on virtual land, really appreciate you joining us today.
Thank you. District Two, Eronimo Vasquez, uh, current Chair, and I'd just like to say thank you, everyone who's joining us today. District Three.
Hey, good morning, everybody. That's me, Adam Hess, uh, District Three Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. District Four.
Good morning, everyone. Judy Be Gay, District Four Supervisor, current Vice Chair. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And District Five.
Good morning. I'm joining virtually. Uh, I am Lena Fowler, District Five Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if we could please... Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought, I thought Lena said something. I'm like, oh, sorry, jumped the gun. All right. So now, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. We will now have call to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted on by the Board of Supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public, but are prohibited by the open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Only the speaker who has been called upon is authorized to speak. To encourage and respect expression of all views, we are asking that there be no clapping, booing, or shouts of either approval or disagreement from the audience. We ask that all attendees and speakers be respectful, that this is a public meeting, and avoid using profane, derogatory, or insulting language. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. We will take public comments from those in the room first, and then take public comments from those who have joined virtually. If you have comments that are related to the public hearing items on the agenda, please wait until we get to those items. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if anyone would like to provide a public comment, you can fill out the orange comment cards by the door on the table and bring those to me. We don't have very many people here, so you can also come up to the podium. You'd like to provide a comment, you've joined us virtually, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear as a hand if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. If you click on that raise hand icon, that will raise your hand and notify us you'd like to speak. You've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. At this time, Chair Vasquez, we do not have any comment cards or hands raised.
Okay, we'll give it one more minute.
We have no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
All right, in that case, thank you very much. We'll move on from public comment, and now we'll move on to item number one, consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating May two thousand and twenty four as Mental Health Awareness Month. With that, I'll hand it over to Health and Human Services. Erica? Sorry, it says Erica Shaw. So I was like, wait a second. Michelle Axon, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and members of the board for having us today. We are honored today to bring you Mental Health Proclamation. As we know, this is near and dear to every one of our hearts, and we are just so pleased to be able to read this and proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness. Erica Shaw, our HHS Division Manager over Recovery and Resiliency Division, who focuses on health and mental well-being, will be reading the proclamation, and then we'll share with you a few of the activities left remaining this month. So Erica, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Chair Vasquez and board members. Now, for the proclamation designating May two thousand and twenty four as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas our country observes National Mental Health Month during the month of May, to increase awareness about mental health, this observance is a pledge to prioritize the mental health and well-being of all residents, to raise awareness that mental health is a vital component of overall health, to acknowledge that mental illnesses are common and treatable, and that recovery is possible. And whereas people are inherently worthy of life, love, and healing, no matter what they look like, no matter where they are in their journeys, no matter what they are or aren't able to do. And whereas Coconino County stands in solidarity with those who are experiencing mental health challenges, and the families and friends who support them, along with the dedicated mental health providers whose services and support improves the lives of so many individuals. And whereas sharing personal experiences of living with mental illness or the loss of a loved one to death by suicide can reduce barriers and normalize the process of individuals seeking mental health treatment. And whereas we acknowledge the interconnectedness of an individual's lived experience, social and community context, and broader social determinants of health as they impact mental health and well-being, and recognize the importance of addressing all of the social determinants of health to improve well-being and mental health. And whereas one in five adults experience a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas Health and Human Services remains committed to optimizing the health and well-being of our residents, supporting the recovery and resiliency of all of our community members. Now, therefore, we do proclaim May two thousand and twenty four as Mental Health Awareness Month, pledging to continue supporting Coconino County Health and Human Services and all of our community partners as they expand access to behavioral health care, disrupt stigma around mental health, and continue finding innovative ways to promote mental health and well-being.
Thank you. Appreciate the proclamation. Well, we'd like to go ahead and do a motion in a second before we get into comments.
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Who would like to start off with some comments? Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and, and thank you, Erica. Good to see you virtually. Haven't seen you for a while, so, uh, it, it's good to see your smiling face virtually. And Michelle, thank you, and thank you for bringing this to us. Um, you know, I know that the public is aware that our Board of Supervisors in Coconial County has made a big commitment for behavioral and mental health, um, programs, and also to really bring, uh, the whole issue behavioral and mental health, um, and the importance of it to our community. In order to have a, a vibrant and fully productive community, we need to stop the stigma, stigmatize, stigmatization, I said it, uh, uh, for, um, um, behavioral and mental health, and to really make it part of our overall health goals, not only as individuals, but as our community. And, and so I really appreciate you bringing this proclamation declaring May two thousand and twenty four as Mental Health Month. Uh, it is our intent as a Board of Supervisors, and certainly I know it's been HHS's goal, uh, to optimize mental health by providing the very best, uh, programming we can do here in Coconial County, and partnering with so many of our, um, nonprofit partners, uh, on making sure that we do the best we can for all members of our community, especially those that are struggling. So, uh, appreciate you bringing this forward, uh, getting this out of the shadows, getting this foremost, uh, as part of creating a vibrant and healthy community. So, thank you so much. Great to see you, Erica. Thanks, Michelle, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other comments from Supervisors? Supervisor Hess.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, this is, this is good. Um, thank you both for, for bringing this up. Um, you know, coming from my military background, I'm touched way too many times with the loss of so many, you know, friends and just members, some of my soldiers. And, uh, I really appreciate you working this to make sure that they have someone to come to. Just talk, just, just be open and aware of, you know, they're not alone. So keep it up. Keep doing the hard fight, and, uh, and we'll keep bringing people to you if we can. I, I know I've, my number is always on whenever I see like a Facebook post that's like a little off, because most of my soldiers are across the country, and, and I'll reach out right there in public. Hey, here's my number. Call me. Call me, and, uh, I'll get you with somebody, or I'll just listen. So you guys are the ones, the experts, so I always take training from you every time, and I really appreciate it. Keep, keep it going. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brigade.
Good morning, Michelle. Thank you for bringing the proclamation, um, regarding the Mental Health Awareness Month. And, um, I just want to say that, you know, unfortunately, we have people that are faced with this, um, illness, and that, you know, we, we all need to be there to support them in, in any way we can. And certainly, the board has done its, its share, you know, by, uh, making it a priority and, uh, trying to, even with funding through this process that we did with the budget. So I just want to say, keep at it, and it's going to take everyone to, uh, uh, make sure that, you know, they're, they're getting the help that they need. And, and, um, and this not only just, um, pertains to, um, um, the veterans or, you know, people that have, that are armed services, it's everybody. Some, someone has it within all these aspects of, um, um, so I just want to say thank you for bringing this up. And, and it's really hard, uh, I, it's really close to home, you know, that we see these things that are happening. So I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this before our board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not turning my camera on because the internet is very weak here. But thank you, and, uh, yes, uh, mental health, we're working on this every day in the county. All through our, uh, budget meeting, we've been talking about mental and, and how, and all the services that are provided. I just want to thank recently, um, partners and which we, we do a great deal of, which were very fortunate that we have charities, um, just opened up the, um, point or might become homeless, and it's a transitional housing. I think Michelle and Kim and team were all there, but, you know, that's just a, a a way of housing is so important for people that find themselves in the situation, it's not their fault, and they, and they can they just need that round service to, um, kick on feet. So I just want to thank all those that work in the area, and yes, with mental health is really brain health, and, and brain health the healthier are is the better.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Appreciate it. I'll go, and then if she has anything else she wanted to finish when she reconnects, I'll pass it back to her. Uh, I just want to say thank you for this proclamation. Mental health is such an important issue in our communities. Uh, COVID made it worse. Uh, technology, while it's been great, giving, making life easier, it's also separated people in a lot of ways and created a lot of anxiety, especially for young people. And so these services are so crucial to get out there for our communities, because if we don't talk about them, we don't talk about how it's affecting us and how we're struggling with things. There's collective strength in sharing that. And our folks in our communities, when they feel lost and, and alone, that's when bad things happen. And so it's so important that we cast that safety net for our community and have those programs out there. And, uh, just really look forward to seeing the youth, uh, program that, that your department is developing roll out as it's ready. You know, it's so exciting that, that, uh, we're having these conversations, because that's how we get past that stigma, is having those conversations, being able to tell stories and be able to listen to each other and just feel connected. That human connectedness, I think, is the biggest thing for me that was so difficult during COVID. You know, and, and it took a while to get beyond the, oh, now I have to be in person. Now I have to talk to people in person, and, and I know that for a lot of folks, especially our young people, that creates anxiety and fear and stress. And so these programs are the things that'll help teach our young people and teach all of us, really, because we can all learn new skills, coping skills, to deal with the new world that we're living in as technology becomes more and more prominent in our lives. And so, again, just really appreciate the proclamation. Uh, I hope everybody takes this month to have these conversations with your loved ones and next people with resources, because there are resources out there. But I got to admit, having tried to help some constituents at different times, it's a maze, and it's not always easy to get, you know, support for folks when they need it, when they're in a crisis. And so we really need to look at how the programs that we're putting in place can help support that, so that way we alleviate some of that pressure. And I know a lot of the ARPA money that we put into mental health services is just barely going to start going online, so it's really exciting, but it's also important that we keep talking about it, so it manifests, so we bring it together. So thank you very much. Appreciate the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and Board of Supervisors. We're just so grateful for your commitment to mental health and meeting the needs of the community that we can't say thank you enough. Um, if you have anyone who's interested, we are teaching Mental Health First Aid next week, Thursday and Friday. Um, they're both half-days, and our own Erica Shaw will be teaching it, so it is available virtually if you're out in the field. We will get you more information on that, but we would welcome anyone to participate. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day. Oh, excuse me, Vice Chair Brigade has a comment.
Yeah, and, and the Mental Health Awareness, um, proclamation has Matt, Matt Ryan's name on there. Can you guys, I guess I, I just want to bring that. Okay.
Nice catch. I did not catch that. All right, thank you. Next up is our Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be acted upon, uh, by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately? Supervisor Horstman.
There, there we go. If I may, uh, get the number, I apologize. Uh, number three, uh, to, uh, the action to appoint to the Coconial County African Diaspora Advisory Council. Um, it'd be great just to get some background information on, uh, Margaret Hanigan, so if we could, um, remove three.
Okay, are there any other items to remove? Okay, number four. Okay, so, in that case, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through fifteen minus number three and minus number four?
By May Chair?
I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number three, consideration and possible action to appoint Margaret Hanigan to the Coconial County Africa, African Diaspora Advisory Council for a term to expire on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty eight. And with that, I'll hand it over to our Counter Manager's Office.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. If appropriate, could we, uh, hear four first? We're seeing if Margaret is on. I do not believe that she is. Um, but, um, we're just taking a minute to see if she's available to say a few things, and, and if not, we'll, we'll, um, have someone to speak to it. Um, so if, if, if appropriate, if we can hear four first, we'd really appreciate it.
That'll be fine. We'll go ahead and table three until, uh, we finish with four. Or as consideration and possible action to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty four dash seventeen, replacing and superseding Resolution two thousand and twenty three dash thirteen, approving the continuance of Coconial County coverage for, of volunteers for workers' compensation insurance and salary equivalent for computing compensation benefits and premium payments for volunteers serving Coconial County in fiscal year two thousand and twenty five. With that, I'll hand it over to our Elections Department.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. I see Margaret Pernado had her hand raised and has been promoted to panelist and is here to address the issue. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can you hear me?
A little louder, please.
Oh, speak up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you well now. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. What questions, uh, can I answer for you, Chair?
Not just, just an overview of what, what it is, and that's all it is. Just maybe like, um, yeah, just, just an overview of what, what it is.
Oh, uh, thank you for that question. Under Arizona Revised Statutes, government entities have the option to, uh, vote to cover their volunteers for workers' compensation benefits. Um, that is not something that is allowed for, uh, non-governmental entities, so it's something that we wanted to avail ourselves of. It protects our volunteers with medical coverage for, um, the cost of treatment of any, uh, injuries sustained while they are volunteering for us in the course and scope of their duties and under the direction of, uh, county employees. And we have many different types of volunteers, and those are outlined within the resolution itself. Um, the, uh, artificial amount which is, um, used for premium calculation purposes and also for, um, benefits of lost time and wages, um, should there be an off-work time that should occur, is four hundred dollars per month, per volunteer. Um, the only exception to that is our, um, Sheriff Reserve deputies who have both armament and, um, the ability to make arrests. And those, um, per the resolution, um, have a, uh, set amount which is used for premium calculation purposes and benefits should there be an off-work time that would occur for a volunteer of the original starting time of a fully trained, um, entry-level sheriff deputy.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brigade, did you have any other additional questions?
The reason why I was asking was it had everybody listed on here by categories, um, Citizen Patrol, Cert, and Detention, and Emergency Management, HHS, and Parks, Rec, Public Works, all departments. And so that's, that's, that's the only thing that I was kind of wondering about. Um, so these are people that are just volunteering and you're, we're just considering, um, um, their, their um, insurance and salary equivalent premium payments is, that's, that's what it's for.
Yes, so that we can extend our workers' compensation benefits to volunteers should they be injured while they are out there volunteering services, um, to the, uh, to Coconino County and the community. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Supervisor Horstman.
No, I think it's a wonderful benefit, and it's a nice thing we, we can extend. So, uh, I'm really glad to hear this, and I think you just, um, I know that Supervisor Brigade wanted just to make the public aware of, uh, you know, what we provide for our volunteers. So, um, really appreciate it and appreciate your update on this.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Okay, in that case, can I get a motion to approve item number four? We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade, a second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you for the reporting, and, uh, we'll move on to item number three. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, Supervisor Horstman.
Um, I, I didn't know whether Margaret was going I didn't know whether Margaret was going to be on or not. So if she's not on, I just, I wanted to pull it aside, quite frankly, to thank her and for her joining the Coquigny County African Diaspora Advisory Council. It is very, our advisory councils are very important for us. I think it's an important opportunity for members of the community to be involved and to provide information to us on an ongoing basis. I appreciate her willingness and her commitment of her volunteer time to do exactly that. And I note that she's from Williams. So another wonderful thing from outside just the greater Flagstaff area. I also note, and I thought this was really interesting, is that she's a forest archaeologist. So I wanted to ask her all about that because I think that sounds like a wonderful and interesting background. So I just want to thank her for being involved and appreciate her being willing to join the advisory council. So that was the only reason I wanted to pull it out, Chair. And at this point, I would enter a motion to appoint Margaret Hanigan to the Coquigny County African Diaspora Advisory Council for a term to expire on December 31st, 2028.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any comments from other board members at this time? Vice Chair Brigade?
I just want to say that, you know, this is with a person with that amount of experience. I think, you know, this person is well knowledgeable and very interested in doing the work. So with 35 years as an archaeologist and 30 years assisting with record facilities and stuff like that, I just want to say thank you so much for showing interest and that, you know, we are willing to hear from you later on as things go along. And then just again, thank you so much for your interest.
Thank you. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Margaret for volunteering. This is awesome. I mean, looking at the date there, December 31st, 2028, you've made a heck of a commitment. And so do all the volunteers throughout the county. And I just want to do a big shout out to everyone that volunteers for these because it's not just a one and done. This is a commitment and for someone to jump up like Margaret did, I really appreciate that. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler? Just checking. Oh, yeah, we did lose her. I forgot. All right. Oh, is she back? Oh, okay, good. All right, just checking Supervisor. All right, well, in that case, I'd just like to reiterate what my colleagues have said and just grateful for Margaret for applying for this council and being part of our diversity councils. It's so important to get volunteers. It's people putting several hours a month to put in for these different items, whether it be our diversity councils or our CERT or other volunteer mechanisms in the county, especially when we did cleanups after emergencies, those kind of things. It's so appreciated and so necessary in our county. And that's what makes our county great, is that we support each other through all those things. And so, like I said, thank you to all those volunteers. And if you're thinking about being a volunteer, we always need extra support and we always want to hear your voice and your opinions on these councils to help us form better decisions. So thank you. Yes, County Manager, Deputy County Manager?
Thank you, Chair Vasquez, and thank you to Sue Brown for attempting to reach out. She's currently at Bowles Station and so was on standby to try to reach that attendance. And so just thank you for the recognition. Well-represented of Coquigny. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have someone online with their hand up.
Chair Vasquez, that's just Deputy County Manager Lucinda Andriani notifying it's her for me.
No, no problem. I was hoping it was Margaret. So is it just that iPhone?
Lucinda's asking for a promotion. So she has her hand up.
What kind of promotion?
All right. Well, thank you. We really appreciate it. And again, appreciate all our volunteers. All right, next, the board will resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors may have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade. We have a second. Supervisor Horseman, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are now the Flood Control District and we're looking at the Flood Control District Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Flood Control District Consent Agenda Item 16, unless of course someone would like it removed to discuss?
At this time, I would move to accept the consent agenda set forth in item number 16.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
I'll move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess. Have a second? We have a second by Vice Chair Brigade. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All right, now, can I have a motion to resolve as the Health Services District Board of Directors? We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade. Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you. Now, item number 17, consideration and possible action to approve Amendment Five of Intergovernmental Agreement CTR 055271 between Arizona Department of Health Services and Coquigny County Health and Human Services, acting as the health district in the amount of $169,062 for a period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, to provide maternal health and public health improvement program. With that, I'll hand it over to our-
It's a consent agenda?
Consent, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
At this time, if I may, Chair?
Yes, please.
I will go ahead and ask that we approve the Health District Consent Agenda, item number 17, as read by our Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second? We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman and a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors? We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade and would have a second? Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, it is 11:30? Or 10:30? Okay, and I see we're a little bit ahead of schedule?
Should we start our roundtable that we haven't done for I don't know how long?
Or should we move up County Manager's Report and Government Affairs and then do our roundtable?
We can start with the County Manager's Report. Government Affairs, we do have our contracted lobbyists that will be joining us later this afternoon. So possibly Gregory can get a bit of an update, but then Karen would be joining us later today. He can be on this morning, so. That's good. We'll have Karen join us here in a bit. And is she getting on right now, Gregory? Okay, do we? Yeah, do you want to go ahead and start, Gregory? Are you okay with that? Awesome. And Chair members of the board, just FYI, we do have the coconuts recognition at 11:30. That is time certain Flagstaff Unified School District is releasing, I believe, at 11:15 today. So that's the time certainty.
So I have a few things to hand out. So good morning, Chair Vasquez and board members. Privileged to be here with you this morning. It's been a while. We've provided written updates over the past month while you handled the budget. So I hope you found those valuable. We'll start by a federal legislative update. Keith Breckus is here and Karen Cruz will join us momentarily for our state component. This morning, Bob Anana notified us that they will be here on June 13th between 8:00 and 10:00. We've been reaching out to schedule 30-minute meetings with board members. We, just a reminder, we'll be limiting those to two supervisors in 30-minute blocks. Sorry, Chair, did you have something? Okay. Yeah. Well, we'll certainly keep you appraised of those discussions. Just to note procedurally, and what we're working on over the next few months is legislative proposals are due August 5th to CSA. So we've scheduled meetings with you and working with you over the next few weeks to get your input on that, as well as reaching out to our department elected officials. I have confirmed with Craig that even though they're due to CSA on August 5th, our first board meeting back after the summer recess is August 13th. But there will not be any trouble with submitting them under that slight delay. The goal is to work with board members over the summer in EOLT to potentially review proposals and develop a strategic vision on what can be submitted through CSA or what would become part of our county legislative agenda. We believe at this time, pursuing the DFFM proposal, $35 million for the wildfire emergency response fund would be something that we would recommend submitting again. And we would utilize the HB 2193 that Representative Cook worked with us on earlier this session. And then we would also intend during that August 13th discussion to work with you on our federal and state legislative agendas for 2025, so that we can begin work on that over the fall with any stakeholder outreach that would be needed. And then we would circle with the board when the new board comes in in January to make any adjustments as needed as we work with the new board in January. Just to note, I'll pause there for any questions first on that procedures or process.
Any questions from board members at this time? All right, please continue.
Sue just distributed the FEMA document, which is the Harmful Incident Reform, which has been proposed by this board and directed to staff to carry that out. We've been in conversations at the staff level with Paul Babbitt, with Senator Kelly's office, Bob Anana, Lucinda Andriani and Wes Dyson. And we've developed a set of policy recommendations that Paul Babbitt is looking to move into legislation. So we proposed a five-year incident period within there. We've also proposed coupling the incident period to the grant performance of the agency, meaning that if the agency delays funding, then the incident period gets extended. So that incentivizes the agency to perform. We've also looked at implementing the wildfire commission's recommendations as it relates to a categorical exclusion for erosion control, as well as a categorical exclusion for infrastructure investment installment, sorry. And we've also looked at and put in there a provision to, you know, have FEMA provide some flexibility for local jurisdictions to install infrastructure in changed watershed conditions, where we know a 12-inch culvert, you know, based on 26 times more flow through the watershed after a wildfire, it may not be the best wise and prudent investment of taxpayer resources to reinstall the 12-inch culvert when we know a 36-inch culvert would do the job. So why have to continue to reinstall infrastructure that's not appropriately sized to the changed watershed condition? And so we're continuing to track that with Paul Babbitt and Senator Kelly's office. The document that was distributed today has been distributed to Mr. Babbitt and we look for his feedback on that. And we've been working with him over the past month as we refine these staff policy kind of in the weeds discussions. So happy to take any questions on that.
Any questions at this time?
On the-
Please continue.
Thank you. On the secure rural schools front, I believe my advice is that we anticipate a delay in the FY24 payment. We would usually receive that payment in April of next year, 2025, for federal fiscal year 24. NACO has led, NACO has let its interstate region know that they learned that the House Chair of the Ag Committee, Representative Thompson, is adding the SRS authorization to the House version of the Farm Bill and that is being marked up today. There's still a long road ahead before Congress, both the House and the Senate passes the 2023 Farm Bill. Even though we're in '24, it did expire September of last year. And so we've been operating under continuing resolutions. While the Farm Bill is a good vehicle, we likely will not have one until either December of this year or most likely after the election with the new Congress next year, which then puts everything back into discussion because you have new members. Likely that would be working on it, not all new, but some new. So, you know, if the Farm Bill SRS authorization is put on there and we don't get a bill till 2025, obviously we would miss or have that payment delayed in April of 2025. So we would get it probably six months after the enactment of the bill, but more to come on that. We are mobilizing advocacy around this. We've sent another number of letters. Bob and Anna continue to reach out to Congressman Crane and the Arizona Republican delegation. There's been a severe lack of Western Republicans in the House supporting the secure rural schools reauthorization. And we've also been working with Superintendent Mango Pageant in her advocacy efforts through her association to put the pressure on the Republican county superintendents to work with the Arizona Republican Congressional delegation. So we continue to have those conversations weekly and continue to keep Superintendent Mango Pageant up to date as she leverages her advocacy on this as well.
And Chair, if I may?
Please.
Gregory, would you explain also how this is affecting PILT? Even though PILT has been authorized, how this is going to have, if SRS is not, how that's going to affect our PILT payments, which of course Coquigny County is very much in need of?
Yeah, and I reached out to NACO's Joe Jackson. It's a very complicated formula. What happens when SRS isn't fully funded? It pulls money out of PILT because the two formulas interact with one another. So when SRS isn't funded, we do see a decrease in PILT funding. Haven't been able to get an accurate fiscal impact on that. NACO is working through it, but there is an interface there. Right now, we are, we did receive our PILT in FY24 through the budget negotiation, but because SRS is not reauthorized, it does impact the full PILT funding. I'd have to pull up the specific numbers, but I believe I can get you that information.
So it reduces our PILT funding here in Coquigny County?
Yes, it does slightly. And we are planning to attend in DC with Supervisor Horseman, the PILT fly-in, which will occur the second week of September. And that will provide opportunities for engagement with Supervisor Horseman's leadership on WIR, as well as Public Land Steering Committee to advocate both for full PILT funding in FY25 as well as SRS reauthorization. One of the things we do need to be looking at is permanent reauthorization and a permanent way of dealing with SRS. It's a continual nightmare. At one time, NACO was working with Headwaters Economics. They'll see about getting Congress to create a trust fund. So basically having an endowment, a principal balance that would then pay for the SRS payments in perpetuity based on returns of that managed fund. Those discussions kind of fell off the wayside with COVID, but it is something that we should be advocating for and continue to put pressure on because of this continual, every few years of SRS uncertainty. So with that, happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Keith.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
Keith?
Good morning, Board. I just have a few federal updates to share. First of all, on the Affordable Connectivity Program, I know that's been important and something we've advocated for them to continue. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like that'll be successful. The administration supports extending the program, as do some members of the House minority, but there's a lack of support in the House majority. So according to Bob- but there's a lack of support in the House majority. So according to Bob Anana, our federal lobbyist, the Affordable Connectivity Program is probably for all intents and purposes being discontinued, and there's not a likely prospect that it'll be revived. But that will impact about six thousand households in Coconino County, over two thousand in Flagstaff, and another four thousand throughout all your districts. Probably the largest per capita impact will be in the tribal areas in districts four and five, but it's something that impacts people throughout the county. So the affordable internet for those that were low income will will discontinue and will have to look for other ways for those people to get their services. My next update on uranium, the President signed into law HR ten forty-two, the Prohibiting Russian Uranium Imports Act. This bans the import of Russian uranium and revives domestic nuclear fuel production. This was expanded or supported by Congress. It actually passed on a voice vote in the House and unanimous consent in the Senate and was signed by the President. It's probably from a foreign policy standpoint, it makes sense, but one, one thing from our county is the concern is the increase of domestic uranium production may increase the pressure to produce it in our area. And of course, we already know the Indian Plain Mine near the Grand Canyon is a concern, and there are there mining claims that could potentially be activated over the next decade. So just something to be aware of. The farm bill, as Gregory mentioned, the House Ag Committee has started writing up a farm bill. Like Gregory said, it probably won't pass until either late this year or sometime next year. But there are some highlights in there, I guess, or things that the county might take interest in. First of all, I guess, just from a grand standpoint, it they took away a lot of the climate provisions and some of the things that are in the Inflation Reduction Act, so they're rolling back some of that. But in terms of things that they're doing that might impact the county, it does provide for direct higher authority for NRCS, which might be helpful in in speeding up processes. And we use NRCS a lot for some of forest restoration and other things like that. And it does update the Emergency Watershed Protection Program by authorizing financial and technical assistance. Sure.
Yeah, and just, you know, I know we had farm bill priorities here, and we're still working through the markup in terms of identifying those priorities that this board directed last year, but there there is the expansion of the Good Neighbor Authority within the bill. And then we're also looking at whether the timber receipts are there, which we believe they are, for counties to retain the value of those timber receipts, which will increase and help us increase our forest restoration operations.
Those provisions are likely to be helpful. And then there is right, yep, that's, yep, and it may pass in the next Congress, so we'll see how that goes. And then there is something to update the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, authorizing financial and technical assistance for restoring and maintaining vegetative cover and hydrological restoration measures. So we haven't looked into the details of that, but that sounds like something that could be helpful in terms of like watershed restoration on forests. A lot of the other measures, the person in charge of the committee is from Pennsylvania. A lot of the other stuff deals with traditional farming and agriculture. There's probably not as much forest stuff as we like in there, but some of the provisions Gregory mentioned are are there, which is good. Then on some more positive, I guess, bipartisan cooperation news, there's some handouts there for the Explorer Act, which is a Westerman Republican from Arkansas, Raoul Grahava, our Democrat from Arizona, have worked together on that. It's kind of a like the Great Outdoors Act was in that it's sort of a good bipartisan piece of legislation that I think will improve some of the access to public lands and some of the uses of that. So that's kind of a positive piece. It does do some things like supporting gateway communities by hopefully addressing housing shortages and updating the infrastructure. We'll see how that plays out. And then it also improves accessibility to disadvantaged groups and to people, disabled people, veterans and others. Any questions on any of those?
Supervisor Horse?
I don't know what I did with mine. You just handed it to me, and I've already lost it. Sorry about that. You know, the Explorer Act is really important, and it's something for us to keep looking at as we move forward. You know, obviously, Coquigny County is a recreation economy and and a recreation community as well. And one of the things from sitting on, you know, the BLM rack is to really see the lack of money that is being put into the infra- infrastructure to really take care of our public facilities, both our national parks, our national monuments, and our BLM lands. And so I'm really excited to see this as a bipartisan effort. We know our public lands are in fact being loved to death. And unless we start putting the money into them to preserve and protect as well as to enhance the visitor experience, I'm afraid that, you know, the intended purpose of the national parks and public lands are is going to be counterproductive. The preserve and protect part, and maybe we've lost because of our failure to really put the money necessary to really protect them. And we want the public to be there, want the public to come and enjoy what we offer here in Coquigny County and Grand Canyon National Park and our five national monuments. But in order to do that, we need to make sure we're putting the money in to preserve and protect and maintain the infrastructure and enhance the public visitor experience. So I'm really glad to see this. I'm really excited to to see this going forward in bipartisan effort. And I'm so glad that you brought it to the board. I think it's an exciting opportunity.
Yes, thank you. It's really important that we have this opportunity to have these discussions at the federal level and how it impacts our county directly. Sometimes it can seem kind of out there and distant, some of the federal stuff going on, but then there's some things that specifically are local, and this is an example of that. And so thank you for bringing that to us and allowing us to educate the public on what's happening that impacts their lives directly. Thank you.
And I appreciate all the board's work, too. I know on the Public Land Steering Committee and NACO, I know Chair Vasquez works with HECO and other groups trying to expand outdoor recreation opportunities. I think that's very helpful in moving forward. And I'm encouraged because this basically went through the House on a voice vote in the Senate's taking it up. So it looks like it has good prospects for passing. And and I think Supervisor Horseman, you raised some good points. When we were out for the WR conference in in California and Mariposa County, there was some deteriorating infrastructure in beautiful Yosemite National Park. And so some of that stuff, it could be upgraded because they're really beautiful buildings, but it's some of them needed some repair.
Yeah, and if I may, the number of years ago, a few years ago, the Great American Outdoors Act was passed, which takes oil and gas revenues and reinvest them into public lands, infrastructure. And so we're really just getting into the implementation of that that funding into the system right now. So we are seeing movement on that. That was a historic piece of legislation that was enacted, and it is providing sustained and continued funding into our system to help deal with the deferred maintenance backlog. So we'll we'll continue to monitor that, but we are in getting into implementation on many of those projects.
If I may, Chair, in fact, that money was being used, has been used now for the for the Trans Canyon Water Line, which provide water for Grand Canyon National Park. The infrastructure that came was in place, was supposed to last approximately twenty years. Instead, it lasts close to seventy years. And and that's just an example of the the infrastructure that's really necessary. And yes, that the Great Outdoor, Great American Outdoor, whatever, Recreation.
Great American Outdoors Act.
Great American Outdoors Act was wonderful, and for the first time in a long time, money was put into our public lands and public infrastructure, but it's not enough. And so it's really great to see the Explorer Act and to really continue this. And I think it is something that all of America and all of our public can get behind. So thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry to interrupt, Keith.
Then my final update is on congressionally, our congressionally directed spending requests. As you know, we have four requests with the two Senate offices. Those are still under consideration by both senators. That's the IT Digital Transformation, the Medical Examiner's Office upgrades, and then the Coconino County Tribal Nation Service Center and the Joint Operations, Joint Emergency Operations Center. Those four projects are still in the Senate consideration, and the Senate has not determined which projects are supporting, but each senator statewide could have about fifty. The House moved really fast, gave a really short timetable, and I do have an update there. Within the spending buckets there, we were only able to submit the two facilities projects. That's the Tribal Nation Service Center and the Emergency Operations Center. And we did hear that Congressman Stanton's office has not is not moving forward with our request. They they received fifty-eight requests, but thirty of them were in district. And so the fifteen that they finally approved were all within the congressman's district. So we had hoped maybe that they they would have some leftover for areas outside his district, but that didn't turn out to be the case. However, Congressman Gallego, probably by the end of this week, will make his determinations, and there's some likelihood or probably a higher likelihood that he might consider projects outside his district than than Congressman Stanton, but we'll wait to see how that turns out. And if if we don't get it there, we still have the senators that have delivered to us before in this area. And again, if those go through and get approved by the members of the House or the Senate, there's no guarantee that appropriations will take them up, but but it gives us a chance.
Yeah, and if I may add, Keith, thank you. Just to note as well, we are expecting a budget. We don't know when. But there could be more CRs if we do get the budget FY twenty-five budget kicked down the road into the next Congress. There could be the situation in which the majority, whoever takes on that majority, works with the President and gets rid of congressionally directed spending. So it's something that we're monitoring. We don't expect it, but just to note, with the election coming, there is uncertainty around these projects as well as the whether we'll be continuing to have congressionally directed spending or earmarks into the future, and that will be determined by the election as we move into November. So just wanted to note that. So we're managing expectations as it relates to our highly successful CDS in the past. Past success doesn't guarantee your future success, so.
Say that about stocks, right? Anyways, I am, that is my update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll turn it back over to Gregory and Karen for a state update.
Any other questions? All right, please continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and board members. The state legislature continues to churn, continues to keep people up at night, and we continue to engage. So yesterday, JLBC published their May report for revenues for the month of April. Revenue collections were nine million below the JLBC baseline, January revenue forecast. And perhaps of note, April sales tax collections, which reflect March sales, declined slightly during the month and were twelve million below the baseline forecast. This decline was surprising as overall sales tax collections have only seen one other month of outright decline since the shutdown in business activity during the COVID pandemic in spring twenty twenty. So over four years, we've only seen one month declining sales tax revenue in March is the second month. So we're, it's something to monitor in case the economy is cooling off. Doesn't look to be too terrible at this time, but it is an indicator, a data point that we do look at as we look at the revenue picture, both at the county and the state going forward. Just to note, want to go through a few bills here before I turn it over to Karen. Yesterday, want to thank Sustainability Specialists. I want to thank Sustainability Specialist Marty and then Community Developments Nina, who brought forward a bill for some questions as it relates to gray water use. It's twenty ninety-seven. The County Supervisors Association opposed the bill. There was also a letter from the Arizona Water Reclamation Association, Onsite Water Reclamation Association opposing the bill. The bill would basically change the definition of black water by removing kitchen wastewater from black water. And then it opens up, you know, a host of of issues because basically it would allow people to discharge gray water anywhere, depending on their location, including urban areas, even though gray water reform is something largely rural areas are interested in. So in reaching out to CSA, ADOT did notes serious concerns or sorry, not ADOT, ADQ during testimony. Obviously, they can't take positions, but they did note serious concerns with the bill. We believe at this time the issue is best left to rulemaking, not legislation, because it's taking a hammer when a scalpel could be better used to provide relief in some of our rural communities, particularly Valley, where this issue is a big issue. However, you know, CSA did oppose the bill at the time. Our staff did not identify many concerns with it. However, sustainability staff and community development staff did reach out on it as asking if it was something we could support at this time. At this time, I'd recommend that we continue to not support it or stay neutral and that we direct any sort of reforms around gray water and its categorization back to ADQ rulemaking so that they can provide relief for some of our issues in our rural communities without creating other issues or unintended consequences in urban environments. Along that line, we've seen the legislature take up a number of bills, elections being HCR twenty fifty-six, which would be a referral to the voters. Would voter protect election statute, which makes it very hard to change? It would also impose a one-time cost of over eight hundred thousand dollars on Coconino County with an additional five hundred thousand dollar ongoing cost. It would require tabulations, say, in the whole mountain. For example, we've been working with Elections Director Muster, rallying Karen to reach out to members. Given that it's an unfunded mandate, and there's other provisions in the bill, including removal of the language about vote centers, and then just saying polling place, which some jurisdictions have indicated concern. We, I have signed the board in in opposition on this bill based on opposing bad public policy and our legislative agenda around elections and providing safe, secure, and accessible elections to all within Coconino County. So I'm happy to take any questions on that, but did want to bring that forward. I believe you heard about it last week at the CSA board meeting.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Horseman?
We know, I know the legislature seems to have decided to take issues directly to the voters, probably because of concern about vetoes from the governor's office. Do we have any idea how many?
Yes.
Good.
At this point, I believe there are six, and we send that report out every week to the board as we can. It's the enactment report and legislative policy referrals to the voters' report, and we are tracking those numbers. There's four from last year, and I believe two from this year. So we're up to six, and then there could be additional changes. I haven't had a chance to look this week.
So how long is our ballot here in Coquigny County? Any idea?
My understanding.
How many pages? Four pages?
Yeah, two-page ballot, front and back, my understanding. And that other jurisdictions, like in Maricopa County, may be looking at a three-page ballot. Yeah, or three, three pages, double-sided.
And this is really hard, obviously, because we're going to have to do some education for our public to make sure they go through that ballot and 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 answer everything right to the very last question. And when we have the expenditure limit that we will have on the ballot coming up, we want to make sure our public is informed and takes their time to get to know the issues and quite frankly, vote on these issues. So that is a concern. I'm very sorry to hear this.
Yeah, and so Karen is is mobilizing opposition with key members in the Senate. And she'll talk to that here in a minute. The other bill I wanted to bring forward is HCR twenty sixty, of which CSA has notified you of as well, and I've sent it out a couple of weeks ago, and it's border benefits, fentanyl, illegal entry. Mr. Toma is bringing this forward. It would require It would require a class six felony for a natural person who is not lawfully present to knowingly apply for a public benefit, federal, local, or state. It requires agencies of a political subdivision to use the systemic alien verification for entitlements program or SAVE, of which we do not use currently. It would make the sale of lethal fentanyl a class-two felony. And then there's also provisions related to civil immunity, forging eligible eligibility documents, incarceration. There's considerable, obviously, the border is a very sensitive issue in Arizona with lots of discussion. We heard from Santa Cruz County last week at CSA that this would be untenable for them, given the costs of enforcing federal immigration law and how it would intersect with the arresting authority of the county sheriff. So we're continuing to monitor that. We do believe that this is part of a larger strategy by the majority to drive voter turnout in the 2024 general election. And so we would be monitoring that. And so CSA has really been taking the lead on getting some modifications in, in the bill. And there's been multiple amendments. Karen, no, I'm here to talk about it, but happy to answer any questions if there are.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members? In that case, I invite Karen to say a few words.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and.
We're all against, you know, obviously the fentanyl coming into Arizona. And it need, there needs to be appropriate legal protections and border protections. This bill is not the way to do it. And, and once again, it takes a marginalized population and quite frankly victimizes them. So I, I know we'll probably be opposing this and I certainly oppose this personally. Immigration issue is something that is separate and apart from this.
Yeah, and if we may, I'd like to hear from the board members on whether we, we want to be signed in. I heard from Supervisor Horstman.
I'd also add that I would be in opposed to this bill. And one of the things that the Nogales supervisors were telling us is just the impact, economic impact to Arizona when bills like this go through, such as SB 1070 over a decade ago. And it was, it was confirmed by supervisors from Maricopa County as well that the impact goes beyond just the border towns, but infects all of our state. And so this is the wrong path to, to fix this issue. So I would also be opposed to this bill. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair and supervisors, good morning. Happy to be with you this morning. If I could just piggyback on that a little bit and add a little bit more information about it from the political perspective, which is where I live. Senator Bennett is the lone Republican holdout on both the elections bill and the border protect. They call it the border protection bill. His concerns specifically about the border protection bill are that it ensnares the DACA kids. So it removes the protections previously allowed for DACA students. So he's very adamantly opposed based on that provision, but he's also concerned about the cost, to your point Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, that this is an undue burden on Border Patrol agents without any additional funding to help support. I think he agrees philosophically that we need to shore up Border Patrol and try to mitigate the fentanyl and the illegal activity coming over. But beyond that, it's a, it's a federal issue. So all of that to say, I don't know if they're going to change it, amend it enough to secure Senator Bennett's vote. And if they don't, they're going to throw it up on the board tomorrow anyway, but it might not have the votes to pass. And I'll go in, the same with the elections bill, since that's on, Greg touched on it and it's on my list as well. And since we're talking about it, my understanding.
If I could stop you right there, I'd like to, just to hear from other board members who may want to be signed in on the fentanyl opposing the bill, if there's any other board members.
Any other comments from board members?
Greg, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Karen and Greg and team for following these legislations. We're constantly finding ourselves having to deal with some, some of these bills that are just not healthy for our state, our citizens, our county. And then just, they just don't, there's no homework done prior to introducing these, these legislations. And then having them send it directly to the citizens, it just is. They're just foregoing their responsibility, basically, and that's, that's what they're doing. So, but I, I, I am opposed with all that said, I am, please sign me in and say that I am opposed to the legislation, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler and Chair Vasquez. Appreciate it.
Are there any other comments, Vice Chair Begay?
Thank you, Chair. As, as mentioned by some of my colleagues, I also oppose. And I think that, you know, we really need to be still continued to follow these legislations. So thank you. Just let it be known that, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Begay.
All right, and, and the other piece that is listening and thinking about it, the other piece, we do want something to deal with fentanyl. It's an issue, but this isn't the right avenue to do it in. And so we would be in support in the future in other type of legislation that deal with fentanyl, but not when it's tied to immigration in the way that it is. So I just want to make that closing comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and Karen, apologies for interrupting you. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to bring this to the board and have board members weigh in on whether they wanted to be signed in on this.
Of course, very important. And then I was just saying, related, the elections bill that Greg did a good job of recapping for you, same scenario. Senator Bennett is the lone holdout. And there may be other Republicans that have concerns about the elections bill. Also, if it passes, would go directly to the voters. So it too will go up on the board tomorrow when the senate convenes. But there's not, my understanding is that at this time, they don't have the votes to pass that. That could change if changes were made to it. But as I understand it, they're at an impasse and the changes are, there's probably, it's a seesaw. So you, you, you know, you get some to get on the bill, but then you lose others. So on the Republican side, they're trying to do that balancing act to see if they can figure out a way to get everybody to vote, because as you know, there's only a one-vote majority in each of the chambers. And if they lose just one member, it doesn't pass. So at this time, the elections bill does not look like it has the votes either, but that could change. And I'm continuing to monitor that and I will continue to monitor that. And I will keep Greg and Keith up to date in real time.
Great. Thank you for that update. We appreciate your advocacy on our behalf.
Of course. And then Greg, is it, am I teed up?
Yeah, you're teed up, Karen. Take it away. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. I just had a couple of things I wanted to bring to the board's attention. First of all, the elephant in the room, of course, is what's going on with the budget. Legislative leadership, the majority leadership staff and the governor's office are meeting daily now to negotiate the budget. They are coming up with different proposals, budget maneuvers to try to fill the gap. As Greg mentioned, the revenue projections are even a little bit less rosy than projected by JLBC at the beginning of the year. That will change over time, but for right now, you know, everybody's needing to cinch their belts. So it will be a combination of maneuvers, but we just don't know what that's going to look like yet. All of that is still being negotiated. What I have been told, because I continue to be very actively in communication with, with folks in the room, is ensuring that whatever maneuvers and approaches that the leadership takes and the governor's office takes does not have any effect on funding to our operations. So any waterfall effect that would cost shifts that would come down to counties, I'm barking as loud as I can and I'm being assured at this point that there is no such cut that would have that kind of an impact on municipalities and counties. So that is good and I am very much on top of that and will continue to be on top of that. And I'm in constant communication with Greg and Keith on this and many other issues. So if, if something changes, I will definitely let everybody know, but that's the status of it now. As I also understand it, both the house and the senate will be reconvening on June 4th, Tuesday, June 4th. And if they don't get the budget done, if they don't call session before that to get the budget done, they likely will get it done at that time. That's what we're hearing now because they're so close to negotiating the budget. So I will keep everybody updated on that. But again, we seem to be in a good position at this point in terms of being cut. But I will keep, I will keep everybody posted on that. Related to that, while there is really no new spending in this budget, what I am hearing is that Senator Rogers continues to champion the five million for eighty-nine, for the flood mitigation on eighty-nine, and that at this time, it continues to be in the mix, largely because she continues to advocate for that. I, I have stepped back from my pushing for that. I've simply been quietly asking staff the status of that ask without, without advocating for it, without really pushing for it. It would be wonderful if it came. I mean, we're obviously advocating for it. I don't mean to say that we're not advocating for it, but we're not really aggressively pursuing it. And at this time, it looks relatively good that that five million is on the table for us at this time. And I will keep you posted if that changes, but because of Senator Rogers' efforts, that's where it's at right now. The other big bills, just generally speaking, kind of taking a step back, that the legislature, the sticking points for the legislature in addition to the budget is, I think they're pretty much done with all of the housing bills. The last housing bill related to accessory dwelling units is now sitting on the governor's desk. The cities continue to oppose it because it did not allow for cities to regulate ADUs as short-term rentals. The guardrail that the Democrats put on in the senate that helped to shore up Democratic support was that it could be used as a short-term rental if the primary residence was occupied by the owner. So if it's owner occupied in the main residence, that ADU could be used as a short-term rental. And that's to help provide some guardrails against some of the issues that we all know about related to short-term rentals. That's sitting on the governor's desk now. We anticipate she will sign it despite city's concerns, because it might not be as grave of a concern for her, juxtaposed against the importance of getting some housing legislation done. The other bill that's out there that will go up on the board tomorrow, we think, is the Water Package, which is a compilation of four bills, different water bills that don't pertain to us. They all, most of them relate to water legislation and water policy within AMAs. The only exception is the transfer of Harkwahela water and that the bill would simply allow for private water companies like municipalities to transfer Harkwahela water off and provide water for their service territories. Not controversial, a lot of the controversial stuff has been negotiated out. The one outstanding bill that the Democrats are trying to advocate for is to allow for water regulation as it relates to wildcat subdivisions, what we call lot splits. It's unclear to me whether that is actually getting attached to the bill that will, that will go up on the board tomorrow or not. That's something that the Republicans really did not want at all. So I don't know if they were able to compromise and get some. There were two different lot split bills. I don't know if they compromised and were able to strike one onto that or not. I'm waiting to hear back about that. I know they're still actively negotiating that water bill, but we will see that tomorrow. My understanding is that while there's conversations going on around rural groundwater management, it's not far enough along in the process to be heard yet. There may be a rural groundwater bill that gets put up on the board sometime this session, maybe. I, I don't know yet. I'm, I'm actively keeping tabs on that and I will keep Greg and Keith in the loop on that as well. And I already touched on the elections bill. And then the only kind of big thing that matters to us is the renewal of ADOT is still kind of hanging out there. That became a political football before the abortion, territorial abortion ban repeal kind of blew up. And then the ADOT issue continuation issue sort of got sidelined. That's still percolating out there. It's not front and center anymore. As you know, other bills have kind of come up and other issues have come up. That continues to be part of the budget discussions. The Republicans would like to see lots of curbing of their ability to fund projects that include any kind of carbon emission controls, any kind of, you know, vehicle miles traveled, monitoring any kind of addition of bike lanes or pedestrian ways, which obviously ADOT and most others really oppose. So, because that impedes our ability to get federal dollars. So we don't think that that's going to happen. It really now comes down to what the renewal timeframe will be. Traditionally, it's been eight years, but there's a feeling that perhaps, you know, keeping closer tabs on ADOT, their projects, grants, and the status of their projects and funding may require a little bit truncated, more truncated timeframe. Waiting to hear about that, that's been sort of sidelined, so there's not been any activity or conversation on that in a while. But I'll continue to keep you in the loop on that. And then we just, you know, we're continuing to keep tabs and keep communication open with key members, including our own, about things that they're hearing about the budget. Obviously, hammering away with both house, senate, and gubernatorial staff about the importance of avoiding cost shifts to the counties. And again, they, they understand it, they agree. And at this time, they're saying that they're not anticipating anything like that. But again, I'll keep you posted. Yes, sir.
If I may, and I know you've been engaged with legislators as well on CSA's ten-point-one million dollar probation salary backfill issue that has a fifteen-county effect. Could you just give a little bit of intel on what you've been hearing on that piece?
Yes, of course. So related to what I said before about there's not really an appetite for new spending, my understanding is that ten-point-one million is not on the table right now. And it's, it has nothing to do with anything other than there's just really not a lot of appetite for new spending in this budget. They're trying to find ways to cut and close the gap. So that's where we're at, at the moment.
Really appreciate that. Thank you, Karen.
And then to leave on a high note, the successes so far that we've had this year legislatively. As you know, Senate Bill 1683, the peace officers cross-training, the peace officers bill, mutual aid agreements was signed by the governor on May 6th. And that was very exciting. And I know that our sheriff's department was very excited about that, as were other sheriff's departments. So I was thrilled to be a part of that. And then House Bill 2548, Military Installations General Plans Land was also signed on March 29th, as you know. So we've had so far a very successful legislative session, in my view. And as long as we can stave off any significant cuts to our budget as it relates to budget cuts generally, I mean, I, I'm feeling very good about our position this legislative session. Would appreciate your feedback, but I'm feeling very good about it.
Karen, if I may, and Chair Vasquez, board members, part of what this, you know, our success is how we strategically target what can be accomplished within the ecosystem. And so I know our board has a very active legislative agenda and set of legislative values. But we did particularly well this year in the strategic targeting of policy issues that we can deliver within the ecosystem. And so I want to thank the board for recognizing that, for being targeted and for being strategic in what we put forward so that we're, we're maximizing our wattage and energy on things that, that staff, our contract lobbyists, and then even CSA and, and others are advising us on what we can accomplish within the environment. Obviously, we, we want to accomplish more. Obviously, we, we want to accomplish more. There's more to do. We're continuing to do that. And as I outlined in the beginning, we will, you know, begin that process for twenty twenty-five. We have an election year in place. We'll be adopting a process where we have, we'll be planning for both Democratic majority and Republican majority so that we can pull our, our agenda off the shelf so that it continues to be strategically targeted to the environment that we're working in. And I just want to recognize that because that has been tremendous to this success that we shared over the past year and really want to recognize the leadership and understanding of the board in pivoting on those things. Because I know there's so much that you want to accomplish and we're here to deliver, but we are also limited by the environment that we're working in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Begay.
Thank you, Chair. What is the status of the, the sober living protection bill?
So Vice Chair Begay and supervisors, that, that is not coming back this session. And I know you're aware Senator Hatafli even recently lost her niece to a very tragic overdose situation in a sober living home setting. And that, that just really hit home the importance of this issue. Senator Hatafli has not given up. Hopefully, she will continue to work on, with, with stakeholders, including healthcare providers to make it so that it is as impactful as possible without the unintended consequences that, you know, kind of arose at the last minute with the amendment that was added on. So my understanding is that she continues to work on that and that we're hopeful. I think everybody is hopeful because everybody understands that it's a very, there's a lot of work to be done there. Something needs to be done there. I think there's widespread support for that. It's really the devil is in the details and I don't believe that she's given up on that. She'll continue to work on that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thank you, Karen. And yes, we know that we need to be targeted and strategic. But there are certainly concerns such as the sober living protections that have really adversely affected so many of our folks that are in need, especially in tribal lands that are not being addressed. They're just being, quite frankly, used as a, a funding means for some very nefarious people and that's very unfortunate. And the second thing that we cannot give up on, regardless of who may be at the legislature, is it really does concern all Arizonans and it is an issue that most people in Arizona believe is a top issue and that is water. And groundwater, rural groundwater management is absolutely essential for us here in Coconial County and the rural parts of Arizona. And I'm very disappointed that the groundwater issue has not been able to find a consensus to be able to move forward. And I am hopeful that Senate Bill twelve twenty-one is in fact dead. And it certainly has been opposed and I know the board opposed that as well. It does not actively provide us the management we need here in rural Arizona. So we continue to, to strive forward. I'm glad we've had a couple of successes with this legislature, legislature, but we continue to strive forward for issues that are very, very important for us here in Coconial County. And I'm sure we will hear from Supervisor Fowler on the need that we cannot be balancing a budget problem that is somewhat of the own making of the majority at the state legislature on the backs of counties. Quite frankly, we're doing the very best we can. We're pedaling as fast as we can to make sure that we are providing for and providing the services for the people here in Coconial County. And we cannot balance the state budget based on their inability to manage their own budget on the backs here of the counties. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And yes, it's something that all of us tried to advocate and push as we're moving forward with the state budget conversations is that we want a balanced budget, but not so that it's cost shift on the backs of counties and municipalities. And so we appreciate that advocacy and we'll continue to move forward, pushing for a balanced budget that doesn't impact our counties adversely.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and board members. Looks like we have some special dignified guests who have joined us today. So just want to note too, though, on one final closing, we did draft a letter to thank Senator Gowan for sponsoring sixteen eighty-three and that is with your office chair. And look forward to getting that out because Mr. Gowan delivered for us. He, he knows rural Arizona and he has been a friend to us on that issue. So really appreciate your consideration of that. And that, that concludes my update for today.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. You filled that whole hour. Good job, Gregory.
We, we were busy. It's been a month. There's a lot going on. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you.
Mister Chair?
Thank you. Uh, yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, I, I just, I just want to again thank, thank our team for working on our behalf on a daily basis at the state. And I feel like this year, CSA, we were pretty much in tune on all of our work. Sometimes we, we have challenges, but I feel like this year we really work closely together. So that I think really makes a difference. And then our target approach too, what can we get done realistically and how do we approach this? And what can we do, you know, opposing bills and being able to get our information out there, our position out there. And now what we have to do now is to turn around and educate our public, especially the bills that are going to the public this election. So we need to make sure that we are, we educate them. And, you know, it kind of puts our own efforts at risk too with our expenditure, expenditure limit going to the ballot. So we're gonna, we have a lot more work to do. So, but with a great team like you all, we'll be able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Are there any other question or comments on, at this time before we move on? All right, in that case, thank you, Gregory. Appreciate the update. Next up, item eight eighteen, recognition of the Coconuts robotic team for Coconial High School for their twenty twenty-four First Championship Impact Award and induction into the First Hall of Fame. And with that, we'd like to invite the Coconuts team and Coach Christine Sappio to present and then we'll make comments afterwards. And so just before they start, I'll just kind of give an update of what they achieved. The Coconuts robotics team of Flagstaff's Coconial High School secured the prestigious twenty twenty-four First Championship Impact Award entering the First Hall of Fame after a competitive event April twenty, April seventeenth to April twenty. Led by coaches Chris Sappio, DHS science teacher, retired NAU teacher Dave Thompson, and the Coconuts distinguished themselves amongst a field of over a thousand First Robotics Competition, First Tech Challenge and First LEGO League teams of students from fifty-eight countries in front of fifty thousand attendees at the First Championships in Houston. This season, out of nearly five thousand First Robotic Competition teams from across the globe, only six hundred reached the fir-, the First Championship. And so it's with recognition for their advancement of STEM in robotics in our communities and across Coconial County, we wanted to invite you here to celebrate you, give the opportunity to hear more about what you do and, and really congratulate you for bringing such a great honor to northern Arizona. And with that, I'll hand it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Christine Sappio. I coach primarily the outreach, advocacy and impact part of our team. Dave Thompson is an integral and essential part of our team. He is our technical coach. He works with the drive team, with the build team. You can see them there kind of getting ready for a match there in that picture. And we like to say he kind of MacGyver's his way through the season with these guys. So I have a number of students here with me. So we have students from the impact team. If you guys would raise your hands, there we go. So the impact team works, they do a lot of the advocacy, the outreach. They've actually organized a number of events themselves this year. They also in charge of our media, so videography, website design and the fundraising aspect to it. And that's the group that I work mostly with. And then we also have the programming and build and drive team and scouting team, if you guys could raise your hands, if you're a part of that. And that's the group that Dave works with and everything. So the way that the drive and build portion works is that they have a new game that's given to them each January. Early January is when that game is given to them and we don't know what it is ahead of time. So the analogy we like to use is if you join the basketball team, you know what the game is. If you join the football team, game, team, you know what the game is. That's not the case with the robotics team because the game changes every single year. And you can see just a little bit of the machine there with, with the drive team kind of getting ready to go take the field there. Oh, I know there's some robot pictures. There we go. So this machine was built by students in less than two months. It was designed, it was prototyped, it was catted, it was programmed, it was broken, it was rebuilt in less than two months. Okay, and that's under the, under the guidance of that build team there. And I just want to give a shout out before I forget. Denise Thompson is an employee here at the county. She works in HR and she, I think she's going to try to make it down. She's in a meeting right now. But she is Dave's heart and soul and everything and helps, allows him to do all those things. So you see the machine there. They called it Euclid. It is designed to pick up those orange rings that you see kind of within the robot there. It has a single mechanism that performs all the tasks that the robot actually had to do this year. So they actually had to pick up those rings and then they had two places where they had to score those rings. One that was about seven or eight feet in the air with kind of an upward launch and that's called the speaker. And one that was more of a downward launch that was called the amp. And there was a lot of strategy involved in this game because if you've got enough pieces in the amp, you could actually increase the amount of points that were scored into the speaker per ring, but only for ten seconds at a time. So there was a lot of strategy to it. And then the final piece of the game is the robot actually has to get up on stage, which is what you see it doing right now. It actually had to grab a chain, pick itself up off the ground by itself and understand this machine is about a hundred pounds. And that's on the lighter side. They can actually be up to a hundred and twenty-five pounds. And it plays on the field the size of a basketball court with five other robots on the field at a time. This is not a small thing that they had to do with this. The alliances actually change every time. So we play in an alliance format, three robots on the red side, three robots on the blue side. Robots that you play against in one match might be your alliance partner in the next match. So if I had a dollar for every time somebody asked me, is this BattleBots? I could retire right now because it's a lot of dollars. So it is not BattleBots, quite the contrary. The team actually and the entire organization operates under two core values that we call gracious professionalism, which is where we compete like crazy, but we have a great time doing it and we support each other and we build each other up by doing it. And cooperation, which is a blend of the word cooperation and competition. You blend them together, you get cooperation. So quite the opposite of BattleBots in the sense that if somebody's robot breaks, you'll have five other teams in their pit helping them repair it because it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that every robot is working at their best. And that creates this culture that is very unique to First Robotics. You know, whenever two rival football teams play each other, not to name names or anything, two rival football teams play each other can be very heated, right? The competition, if you want to win, okay? The analogy that Dave always uses is if one football team's quarterback gets injured and the other team says, you know what, you can borrow ours for this game. It's fine. That wouldn't happen. Okay, that wouldn't happen necessarily anywhere else in the world. And this is the reason why Dave and I and our mentors continue to put so much time into this program is because we're not using kids to build robots. We're using robots to build kids. And these students become incredible humans by the time they graduate. You're going to hear some of the things that they've done for this community within their presentation. I can't think of another program where students are empowered in such a way where they can actually make real change in their community as high school students. And these students lead the charge as they do that. So that's one of the main reasons why, again, Dave and I continue to put as much time as we do into this program because it changes lives. And I just want to give a shout out to some other folks that really are an integral part of our program as well. So you'll see right there, that's, that's a championship. That's, that's, that's that moment. It's just, it would have been ten minutes after we'd been awarded the Impact Award there. Everybody is in shock. You can see within that picture Karen, they're in there in the back row. Susan and Robert Gardenio have been with us since the beginning. Their son started on the team the first year we had it. And we called Susan up one day and begged her to bring us something other than Little Caesar's Pizza to eat because that's all we've been eating for the last six weeks and she and her husband stayed ever since. You see, you know, Dave there and myself off to the side there. We're the lead coaches, but we could by no means do this without our support system. So you said, Dave's wife Denise is a huge part of the team and everything. She allows him, gives him the, you know, the time and, and everything. And she's one of our mentors and stuff as well. She does a lot with our presentation team and reading that as well. We have a couple of other mentors that weren't in that picture and everything, but Patty and Rick Strohns have been a huge part of this team. Again, they had kids come through the program and they never left. Eugene's dad, Tim, stepped up this year. Where there's Eugene, there's Eugene. Tim stepped up this year. He's an employee at Lowell Observatory and he helped the kids actually get the robots to be able to use cameras to be able to actually find the game pieces on its own. Actually use vision tracking and Connor is our lead program there and these guys. And Kate's parents have been very actively involved and stuff, Elena's parents and everything. We could not do this without the support that we have in this community, okay? Everything that we've got going is because this community really supports this team. Our parents, we call them peanuts. Bringing us meals and stuff again, so we don't have to sit there and eat pizza all day, every day. So every single one of the students you see here, their parents have been involved. They've been chaperones and everything is part of the program. Like I said, we have a number of mentors. I could go on and on. Rich Gomez is our head referee and many, many other folks. We also have a number of sponsors, both locally and nationally, some small organizations you've never heard of like Boeing and NASA sponsored this team. Optimum Mobile for a number of years have been sponsoring us, as well as some local businesses. GKCGO Sciences is a local organization that does geology field trips. He's a retired geology teacher and he sponsors the team every year because he sees the value in it. The kids are going to talk about some of the events that they've run. We could not do this without volunteers. We get volunteers from the university. We work with the university to get teachers professional development for coming to our events, coming to our, our workshops and things. It really is a community effort. And if I forgot somebody, I'm so sorry. But we really do want to thank the community and we want to thank Coconial County and the City of Flagstaff. And everyone in this town, I think, knows those red shirts now because they're there all the time. And as much as they give to the community, the community has given us so much more. So it really does open doors. It really does change lives. Okay? So without further ado, unless you all have any questions for me, I would like to turn it over to our presenters here. I want to read the description for the Impact Award, okay? The impact, the process of applying for the Impact Award is, it's long and it's multi-stepped, multi-step. As much time as the build and programming team spent building that robot, we've spent that much time on the impact side preparing their impact presentation to be able to do that. So each year, the team has to prepare a ten thousand character essay. It's only about three and a half pages that describes what it is that they've done in the community. And then they have to answer a set of targeted and specific executive summary questions. There's thirteen of them. And they only get five hundred characters for those. So right there, they're learning how to write clearly and concisely and powerfully. That's, I don't care what major they go in into college, that's going to, that's, that's a skill they can take straight to the bank. Then they have to prepare a formal seven-minute presentation that they do to our panel of judges at the regional competitions as well as a three-minute professional video. Those go on to regionals. They have to present at a regional competition first and then they become eligible to compete at the World Championship for the First Impact Award. They won the Regional Impact Award this year in Salt Lake City, Utah at week one, early like February, early March. And then they were given that, that invitation to come and compete for it at World Championship. Eighty-five teams qualified for that. Out of those 85 teams, they chose six finalists. Out of the six finalists, we were named the winner of this year's impact award. It's an incredible honor. There are only 36 teams in the entire world that are on the first Hall of Fame. And your coconuts are now one of them. So here's the description for the impact work. Yeah, all right. The first impact award is the most prestigious award at first. It honors the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate and best embodies the purpose and goals of first. The first impact award is presented to the team judged to have the most significant measurable impact of its partnerships among its participants and community over a sustained period, not just a single build season. The winner is able to demonstrate progress towards first mission of transforming our culture. The recipient team will be invited to the 2025 First Championship and is now a member of the First Hall of Fame. Now I should actually amend that a little bit. They actually get an invitation to World Championship for the next 10 years. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our presentation team. We have three students, we're allowed to have three students actually on that presentation team. We have a substitution that had to be made because we had Tony, one of our presenters wasn't able to make it today. We have Rihanna. Tony made, that was impeccable timing. Nice job, Tony. All right. So we're going to bring up our presenters. Tony Slade and Elena Klaufenstein and Rihanna Patel.
That's Elena Klaufenstein this year.
I don't know, I'm Rihanna Patel.
Our crescendo start with us, the students. We see our struggles. Hold on. Our paths will always be struggled, we find everything.
Because we are the coconuts and together we've learned.
We can do hard things.
We see the struggles we personally experience reflected in our community. Half the coconuts are people of color and many of us didn't have STEM axes growing up. To bring STEM closer to the kids that need it most, we created the Tembiela Puera Ser and San Diego People Are the Future STEM Fairs. In the past three years, we have reached over 800 kits from Title I elementary schools.
To keep our efforts sustainable, we empower new members to take ownership of our outreach. Like a nut, training to take over a STEM fair after only being a member for three weeks. Because the coconuts are such an integral part of our community, my teacher encouraged me to switch schools and join them. He knew that they could help me reach my fullest potential.
We go the distance to support first at all levels across Arizona. Every team deserves a dedicated coach, but they can be hard to find. So we created FL in a nutshell to coach coaches on the intricacies of running teams. Nutshell has resulted in 21 new teams in the last three years and attending teachers can earn 12 professional development hours.
This year, Flagstaff recognizes us as champions for STEM equity by naming us STEM Community Partner of the Year.
The coconuts are FTC's program delivery organization for the entire state of Arizona, a role usually filled by colleges and nonprofits. We allocate funds to all aspects of running a tournament, traveling the team to events and trading new host teams and volunteers until that tournament has its very own sustainable volunteer base. We keep the cost of AZ FTC low and provide a registration relief fair for teams in need. In the past three years, we've donated $2,719 to 19 teams.
This season, we created two new FTC qualifiers to give rural teams easier access to competition. We've helped teams go from box to bat in less than an hour and created engineering portfolios from scratch. This year, AZ FTC has grown exponentially. We've had 21 new teams for a total of 87 competing in 10 statewide qualifiers. Forty-eight teams took center stage at our two division state championship. Referring and queuing at these tournaments has allowed me to become the role model I always wanted. Others can see successful colored girls STEM and know that they too can do hard things.
The coconuts are tireless in our mission to bring STEM to all. From pasta towers to catapults to junkyard robots, parades to the county fair and the Super Bowl, we've reached 47,000 people at over 100 events in the last three years. We are combining our favorite STEM activities in a children's coloring book that is a wonderfully inventive tale of squirrels, robots and daddy adventures.
We mentor 16 FL and FTC teams and Flagstaff and in the last three years, we've run 34 first events and supported 35 others for a total of 12,500 hours, equivalent to volunteering for almost a year and a half straight.
Three years ago, we began attending the National Advocacy Conference in Washington DC, giving us the honor of singly representing the entire state of Arizona. Through meeting with the offices and centers, Mark Kelly, Kirsten Sinema and Representative Elijah Crane, we contributed to the passing of the CHIPS Act to fully funding every student succeeds act. CHIPS provides funding for after-school STEM programs nationally and creates new tech jobs in Arizona with a brand new microchip facility. NAC is empowering because we can see how our voices can affect change on a national level.
To address Arizona's number 48 ranking in education funding, we created the Arizona Advocacy Conference. Through NAC, we know that more voices result in greater change. So we rallied seven other first teams from across the state and trained them in the art of advocacy. Teams worked together to demonstrate robots on the Capitol lawn and met with 18 different legislators.
After a day of discouraging conversations, we walked into our penultimate ACT meeting. We discussed our achievements in first with Representative Cook and he put CPR and the coconuts in the state budget for $30,000 each over the next three years. And to continue getting teams involved and building relationships with our policymakers, we are hosting the second annual ACT in May. Before joining the coconuts, I never imagined advocating about something that matters, but now I know I can do hard things.
We have seen success with our advocacy efforts, but there are still barriers to them that have more complicated solutions. Thirty-six percent of all Native American students nationwide drop out of school. Less than 3% of people on the Navajo reservation ever leave because we love our home. Getting education and coming back is a way I can give back to my people. But since I live on the rez, I have to spend over three hours on the school bus every day to be part of the coconuts. STEM is just not available here.
Only 0.4% of the STEM workforce is indigenous, so kids on the rez never get to see themselves in STEM. Because this is so important to so many of us, we knew we had to be a part of changing that mindset.
When we met the Navajo Transitional Energy Company, we knew we'd finally found an ally in our mission. And to get the funds, we had the expertise. Together, we created Res Robotics.
Without dedicated mentors, robotics teams fail. So we hosted a hands-on FTC workshop close to home for 40 new res coaches.
Tribal delegates only meet every three months, so getting funding for teams is a long and difficult process. To make things a little bit easier, we advocated to first for rookie grants to cover registration fees and NTech sponsored the robot kits for 12 new teams.
Because the Navajo Nation is larger than the state of West Virginia, these teams are hundreds of miles from each other and the nearest tournament. We built a communication network for these coaches so they would have a reliable resource.
However, there's still this longstanding mindset that we don't belong. Res, res teams feel intimidated by more experienced outside teams. FTC Team Tonkis arrived reluctant to compete, but we empowered them to try. They showed, they competed at their next event, but showed up with a box made of illegal parts. We helped them rebuild their barn and got them ready for the third qualifier.
The coconuts hosted the first ever all indigenous qualifier on the Navajo Nation at Dunne College in Salie for over 150 students. By hosting this tournament on the rez, we leveled the playing field and reduced travel times for teams by an average of six hours. Team Tonkis ended up being captain of the winning alliance. And this is just one example of a rez team whose narrative has changed from we can't to we can.
We even got the vice president of the Navajo Nation to come to this tournament. We've begun changing the hearts and minds of not only the students, but also the tribal elders.
And to rally native communities around STEM success, we advocated to first to let us advance the Inspire Award winner, Roxas Ontek, straight to World Championship.
When I became a coconut for the first time in my life, it wasn't enough to show up and participate. I was expected and encouraged to be better. By helping to curate Res Robotics, I am showing my people that they are capable of far more than they believe they are because we can do hard things. This is the dawn of a new era for STEM education on the reservation. We are applying for grants to fund more teams, recruiting more schools next week and bridging that cultural gap between the rez and first.
Through all of our hard work, every member of this team has had their lives changed.
Who would have thought that my words could show kids that they really could do STEM too?
Who would have thought that a girl from the rez could be a Deans' finalist?
Who would have thought that the little me could drive a Mars rover and see that her dreams are possible?
So take a deep breath, we're going to crescendo again together because I can do hard things.
Yeah, go shashma, agwa deh yel.
Am sakata vas duakariya sakachum.
We can do hard things.
That was awesome. Once you got going, you guys really got going and did amazing work and it's really truly amazing to see what the program has developed to. As a former coconut alumni, class of 94, it makes me so proud to see what the coconuts have done in representing Coconino High School out there. And so congratulations, great job. I look forward to seeing some of the the new, the new teams that come out, your proteges out on the rez, that's so exciting and just congratulations. So really proud of all of you. Thank you. Other comments from board members? Vice Chair?
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today. I says, you guys better get off the floor. You guys floored us. But anyway, I just want to say that, you know, my dad always said, there's no such word as I can't. He always said that and every time one of my siblings say, I can't, and then my dad would say, you what? You know, so I when we put our minds to things, everything is possible and you can achieve anything you want. And certainly, you know, this presentation, I feel that you know, the way it was presented is is something that we instill in a lot of our indigenous people and all people and all staff, all all students within the schools. And I greatly appreciate that. And Alina, you're from my area. You're my granddaughter through your father. So I just want to say I'm very proud of you and your, the others are all here today doing the presentation. And you know, it's up to you. The Navajo way, they say, on the end egg, ah, whoa, chit egg, that means it's up to you. All things are possible. So I just want to say thank you so much, you know, for for doing this presentation. And I greatly enjoyed it and it's very powerful. And so with more people getting into this arena with, you know, what you're doing here, I think, you know, a lot of students will be very, very proud of themselves and they would be willing to go and accomplish, you know, what what they cannot believe they've accomplished. So I just want to say thank you so much and thank you, Shiyaj, for being here today with your daughter. And thank you, you have a lot of support. There's a lot of things, times have changed, you know, where we showed all the pictures of the sheep in a corral and this and that. And times have changed where, you know, he says, go and flip a switch and the lights are on and the water you just turn on. And back in the day, I think what made me strong as a board member is growing up with no water, no electricity, just carrying water, at least a half worth of a mile, you know, just to get to home so we could use it. And of course, the sheep, you know, picking them out every day, shearing, I haven't even done my shearing yet. I just want to keep putting it off. But you know, it's those are things that, you know, are hard tasks and just being out there, you know, after the sheep all day long. And there's a lot of other chores. I come from a family of tan. My siblings, you know, and and being the second mom to them, that's made me very strong too. So anything is possible, sky's the limit. Thank you so much for being here today. Thank you for all the accomplishments and recognition with the Hall of Fame, everything. That means a lot to Coconino County as a whole. And so thank you so much.
Thank you. Supervisor Horseman?
Well, I think Supervisor Begay said it about as well as it can possibly be said. And I just want to thank you all for being here. Congratulations. You make us very proud. To all of your, the, your teachers and those parents that have helped you, that is, that is absolutely fabulous. And look what you can do together. Not only can we do hard things, but together all things are possible and you remind us of that and thank you so much. You've got a huge future ahead of you and I'm so glad you are sharing it with other students because they need to feel what you're feeling now. And I know you're going to share that with them. So thank you so much. We're really proud of you and I'm so glad that we ran into you, to your teacher and your coach at STEM City. And I'm glad you made time for us today to share your great achievement with us. I know today's the end of school and I'm so proud of you for getting to the end of school, right? And, and two more? Oh my goodness. Well, congratulations, you'll do fine. And then enjoy your summer and thank you again. Thank you for all you're doing and you're making us proud. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, thank you. I'll keep it short because I know Supervisor Fowler is going to want to talk to you guys next. She's virtual. You know, I'm an army officer retired and one of the things I always pushed on my everybody, all my guys, my, my officers, my NCOs, my soldiers was to always choose the hard right over the easy wrong. So you guys, you embodied that and that's not an easy thing to do. Trust me. It's, it's one of those things you'll have to always face in decisions throughout your life. And, you know, I just want to say you started off on the right foot. Putting yourself out there, practicing and rehearsing what you guys just did is not easy. You know, you guys made it look easy. I'm very proud of you, even Rusty. You guys did amazing. That's not an easy thing. But you know, it took the whole team. And I see all you guys. We see all you guys. So without the whole team, it's already been stated. You, you guys are not, are not going to be able to achieve hard things and do those things. Man, to see these banners hanging up in Coconino is going to be super exciting and I can't wait to see it in person. Congratulations.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, how exciting. That was a beautiful presentation. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to share what you're doing with us and to be so grounded in who you are, knowing who you are and being able to share that. And then reaching out to other schools outside of your own school, that is amazing. So thank you so much. Thanks for your presentation and just, we're just going to be cheering you on from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Sure.
I just I've probably heard this presentation 500 times while they were practicing it and it, it moves me to tears every time. Because what they're doing is real, what they're doing is meaningful, what they're doing is is making an impact and that's what they were recognized for. Just a few things that I want to share that I'm, again, just most proud of about this team. A third of our graduates are the first in their family to attend college. It opens doors. Just in the last three years, over $3 million in scholarships offered to our ready for it alumnus that are graduating from college. Everything's got to have a nut pun in our world. It really does. It's one of the, one of the highest honors that, that Dave and I really have is being able to coach these students and being able to change the trajectory of a student's future. I was actually Dave's student teacher almost 20 years ago now. And he wandered into my classroom one day and said, hey Christine, you want to go check out this robot thing? I said, that sounds like fun. And half an hour later, we were on our way to Phoenix to go check out this robot thing. And this program is about empowering others. And I know that Dave and his wife Denise have welcomed me and have empowered me to do hard things. I never thought I would do something like this. I know these students have mentored others. We've in turn gotten to mentor many, many teachers. Our mentor network, like I listed just a few of those names, they have empowered these students to do incredible things. And without them, without their support, none of this would happen. So thank you again to everyone who helped make this possible. We had an incredible event actually on Saturday. We, by the time we got back to World Championships, I had about 80 to 100 text messages on my phone from students who had graduated 10, 12, 15 years ago that were watching when this happened. And they're all part of this network as well. The students that came before these Um, the students that came before, these students that you see before, you built the foundation and built that mission and built that vision of bringing this to other people and making sure that everyone has that opportunity if they want it. And there are, there are really no words to describe how special this team and how special these students really are. And remember, we're just one of several thousand teams worldwide that are trying to make a difference in their communities as well. We just happen to be the team that was recognized this year, and you can see why. So, again, thank you, um, I'm gonna stop before I start crying. And I really appreciate the opportunity, um, to speak with you, and we hope that we can partner with you in the future to do more hard things. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, in recognition of your achievements, your great work out in the community, uh, we wanted to give you a certificate of recognition presented to Coconut's robotic team, Coconutino High School, in recognition of your work in being awarded the prestigious 2024 First Championship Impact Award, entering the first Hall of Fame. We extend our gratitude for your work of inspiring innovation and fostering impactful STEM education. This is issued twenty-first day of May, 2024, by the Coconutino County Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, and thank you for representing us so well. And with that, we'd like to know if you'd honor us with a picture with you, with your recognition. Thank you.
One more hard thing, a photograph, right? And we've...
And those are mine. And with that, we'd like to go to lunch. We will return at one fifteen. Thank you everyone.
Thank you for your participation in this event. We hope you enjoy it and we hope you have a great day.
It is now 1:18 and we would like to get started with the meeting so we can be respectful of everyone's time. So, thank you for a good lunch break and now it's time for a public hearing item. The next two items are public hearing items. We will have staff present and then I'll ask for comments from the public. At that time Clerk Daly will provide instructions on how to provide comments in person and virtually. First, we'll start with staff's presentation.
Thank you Chair members of the board and we are introducing Melissa Shaw, our comprehensive planner, to the podium as well as community development staff here with her. And anyone else I need to introduce Melissa? Good, Lindsey is building the presentation, putting the presentation on the screen for us. It's okay.
Now online, okay, thank you. And I think you've introduced all of our staff here. Okay, now we'll start over, thank you very much. Good afternoon Supervisors. My name is Melissa Shaw, long-range planner with community development and I'm here to present to you today a minor amendment to the 2015 Boconino County Comprehensive Plan. The presentation I'm going to show you is a slight update to the one in your packets but I think it will just be more informative to you. This is a little bit of background. The Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance both provide guidelines for how to update the Comprehensive Plan. So, what this is, this is a minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to update the major amendment timeline, adoption timeline. The zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan both outline three different types of amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, an administrative amendment, a minor amendment, and a major amendment. So again, this is a minor amendment to update the major amendment timeline for the Comprehensive Plan. This slide shows you that there are the actual text right out of the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance, the text is identical. And it reads that "Major amendments shall be heard once per calendar year and shall be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting in October of that year." The application deadline for major amendments shall be May 1. And the reason for this is that Arizona revised statutes requires that all major amendments proposed for adoption to the Comprehensive Plan by the Board shall be presented at a single public hearing during the calendar year the proposal is made. And I'm reading that verbatim out of statute because that's important that this is the reason why our Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance both follow this guidance. And currently, the text in the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan is that the major amendment be heard in October of each year at the Planning Commission. And so what we're proposing is to amend the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance to state all applications for major plan amendments to the Comprehensive Plan shall be presented at a single public hearing within 12 months of the dates of submission of a complete application. And the reason for this, the rationale for this is that we found pretty quickly that listing a specific date limits the flexibility when a major amendment like the Comprehensive Plan update or an area plan update could be scheduled for a public hearing. And with that then, the public outreach and the public engagement that all the time goes along with those updates and those amendments. It may get stale, in other words, by having a more flexible date when an amendment could be heard, it would keep the public outreach more current. So, thinking about that then, we also realized that major plan changes and amendments such as the Flagstaff Regional Plan and the County Comprehensive Plan, having that requirement for the one date a year would potentially mean that these two major plan amendments are being heard simultaneously. And those are both big updates, they require a lot of public engagement. And by amending the time when this could be heard, we would like to see them actually uncoupled so that they don't necessarily need to be heard at the exact same hearing date, which would then mean that both plans get their own due, in other words, because they're complicated, they're big plans, then each, the commission and the board could just focus on that one, on that one update. And so, there are criteria that for both an administrative amendment, a minor amendment, and a major amendment, the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance both list what the criteria are for changing those, what constitutes a minor amendment. So that's what you see listed here. There are six different criteria. This amendment meets that third criteria, that text changes and corrections that do not compromise the intent or impact the substantive mixture and balance of the plan. So that is a criteria that this minor amendment actually applies to and the one that it is most relevant to. This is a long list, but the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan both list the approval criteria that must be looked at and must be, that an amendment must be found compliant with for major and minor amendments both. This amendment, actually most of these are not applicable except for number A and D. So, number A reads that the amendment constitutes an overall improvement to the county and this minor text change will create flexibility when a major amendment may be scheduled for public hearing. And then criteria D, that the requested change benefits the county or a specific community. And the proposal to amend this will benefit the county by providing additional flexibility for major amendment public hearings. So the rest of the amendment criteria really don't apply in this, in this case. So here's actually the strikeout change direct out of your packet and that shows the change from that chapter 1, page 14 of the Comprehensive Plan. So again, it reads "All applications for major plan amendments to the Comprehensive Plan shall be presented at a single public hearing within 12 months of the date of submission of a complete application." And then the portion highlighted in red strikeout or just strikeout is that "Our that major amendments shall be heard once per calendar year and shall be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting in October." So that's the portion that's being proposed to be changed. And so in terms of the public engagement and the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, we sent out a couple of press releases regarding this update along with the concurrent update to the zoning ordinance, which you'll be hearing in the next item. This was posted online for public comment. And then of course, there were the required notices for public hearing and the Planning Commission heard a public hearing on April 24th and unanimously recommended approval of this. The recommendation then for the board is that you find that the minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, which is, this is the case number, PZAM24001, meets the approval criteria for a minor amendment and to approve the proposed minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan as presented in section B, which is Resolution 2024-24. And so that is the presentation regarding this minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any question or comments from board members at this time? Vice Chair Brigade?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Under major amendments, it says "Major amendments are subject to a four or five vote of the Board of Supervisors as far as outreach to all internal and adjacent jurisdictions." Can you elaborate a little bit on the adjacent jurisdictions, what you mean about that?
The adjacent jurisdictions, and thank you for that question, and that is the current text in the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance that is, that is not proposed to be changed but the statute also directs that when we have a major amendment to the Comprehensive Plan that we notify all adjacent jurisdictions. So those would be all of the adjacent counties, municipalities, the tribal nations. So we are required to send out public notice to all of those as well during the 60-day public review. during the 60-day public review.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Supervisor Horseman.
Yeah, and this is just, you've said this, and I'm just for clarification because obviously, this is an amendment to the major amendments portion of the Comprehensive Plan. But this major amendment to the, or this amendment to the major amendments of the Comprehensive Plan is actually considered a minor amendment in that we are actually going to be taking a look at the criteria for what's necessary for a minor amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is proposed as a minor amendment to the major amendment adoption timeframe of the Comprehensive Plan. We've had to think about this several times because it's a bit of a riddle. And yes, and there, it's back on your screen, that this is a minor amendment, and those are the actual six criteria for minor amendment that constitute a minor. And if you look in the Comprehensive Plan and the code, then even for an administrative amendment, it sets out what constitutes an administrative amendment, such as a Scrivener's error. Major amendments are different. Major amendment criteria then include things like conflicts between plans, things like that, so.
If I may. And again, just for clarification sake, in taking a look at the Comprehensive Plan for, and the recommendation that you're making here, that you are, you will take a look under minor and major amendment criteria, you are specifically setting forth that the minor amendment to the major amendments portion is actually being met under Roman numeral I and also under the compliance with the major or minor amendment approval criteria, small letter A and small letter D. Is that correct?
Thank you very much for summarizing that, yes. There are several layers of review that go along with these.
And it seems to me like I would agree with your recommendation on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members at this time? Vice Chair Brigade.
Just, just, any minor amendments will still come before the board each time, if anything.
Major amendments definitely will come before the board, as well as minor amendments at public hearings. A minor amendment then, just because that's what this particular amendment is, could be heard at any time of the year. And that's the major, one of the major differences in when they're heard. And that's what statute states, statute directs us, that major amendments basically can just be heard once per year versus a minor amendment could be heard at any time of the year, as long as it goes through the normal public hearing process. That's right. Now I'm getting confused.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Fowler, did you want to say anything?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you. No, I don't have any comments, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Yes, it looks like the minor amendment I'm in favor of amending as proposed by our staff. And so at this time, if we have a motion. Or, let me see, where am I at? Oh, we're still in public hearing, yeah. Okay. Oh, okay. So are there any other questions or comments before we move on to the next step? Got ahead of myself, sorry. Okay, in that case, we'll move on to the public, public hearing part? If there's no more staff presentation? Okay, good. Just checking. The public hearing is open. We'll now take comments. When you are called on to speak, announce your name and place of residence. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly, please explain how the, those here in person and those present virtually can provide public comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if anyone would like to provide a comment regarding this item, you can fill out the comment form, but we don't have very many people in the audience. You can make your way up to the podium for your comment. If you've joined us virtually, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us you'd like to speak. If you've joined us by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. And at this time, Chair Vasquez, we do not have any hands raised.
Okay, we'll go ahead and give it one more minute, see if anybody emerges.
We have no hands raised, Chair Vasquez, and no comments in our inbox.
Okay, well, thank you. I am now closing the public hearing. Supervisors, are there any questions or comments at this time? Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, just to make sure that we have our record on this minor amendment to the major amendment portion of the Comprehensive Plan, I would make a finding, per the recommendation of Melissa Shaw and staff, that the proposed changes of the minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan do meet the criteria set under minor and major amendment criteria, specifically Roman numeral small i, and also compliance with the major and minor approval criteria also meet the criteria as set forth specifically in subsections A and D. And I accept the recommendation from our staff that the criteria is met in order to make the amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. And unless there are more comments, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Are there any other comments by board members at this time? In that case, we have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second? A second by Vice, Vice Chair Brigade.
And if I may just add to that motion, if I, that I would make a motion at this time that find that the minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan meets the approval for a minor amendment and further adopting the Resolution 2024-24 attachment C.
Thank you for that clarification. And with that, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item number 20, "Public Hearing and Consideration Impossible Adoption of Ordinance 2024-04, Amending Zone Ordinance Text AM-24-002." And with that, Assistant Community Development Director Jess McNeely will present. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair Vasquez and supervisors. I'm Jess McNeely with the Community Development Department, Assistant Director and Planning and Zoning Manager. And this item, in conjunction with what you just heard, AM 2402, is zoning ordinance amendments, following up from the amendments you just did to the Comprehensive Plan. And we will not use the words, we are not as dependent on the words "major" and "minor" in this discussion. So of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, by the way, this is an item forwarded with a recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this round of zoning ordinance amendments and forward a recommendation of approval to you. So in conjunction with what you just approved in AM 2401, the priority here in the zoning ordinance amendments is to update Section 5.13, and as Melissa described, removing the October Comprehensive Plan major amendment hearing requirement. This, of course, would allow that hearing to take place anytime within 12 months of application. This, of course, improves the timing flexibility for updating our Comprehensive Plan and allows for better separation between the County Comprehensive Plan update hearings and the Flagstaff Regional Plan update hearings. And in addition to Section 5.13, to update the timing for Comprehensive Plan amendments, you have in your ordinance and staff report a list of several other amendments that were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are non-substantive. They really don't change any use issues on private property in Cochino County, and P&amp;Z Commission acknowledged them as such and recommend approval. The basis for all of these updates, time to time with the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinances can be extensive, and we have to do some cleanups to them when we find, based on practical use, that we could make them more efficient, more flexible, and deal with emerging trends that we see in development in the community. So with this round of zoning ordinance amendments, knowing that the priority is to update the section amending our Comprehensive Plan timing, staff does recommend tabling any amendment needing more discussion or input. And in this round, we did table one portion or one section that staff had recommended approval of. And in the public outreach process, we got some comments that wanted more discussion. So we tabled that one section for more discussion. So the other 19 amendments, other than the one that we've already discussed, Section 5.13, they start on page two of your staff report. They are also included in a summary in your ordinance. We did not receive any feedback or comments on those sections. A little bit of discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission with some questions and some clarification, but their recommendation to you is, of course, unanimous. We did some community engagement for these updates. Nobody beat our door down trying to give input on these updates. So they were posted online for over a month. It had a great website we have where community members can review documents and comment directly on the document itself. We did a press release, so communications staff assisted us with a press relief, press release. And of course, we met the ARS requirements to post the amendments and advertise the amendments. Of the four communications received, one was just some real clarification, and staff had some good engagement with a community member, clarifying what the amendments were about. And once they were clarified, there was no comment or opposition. And we did receive three comments regarding Section 3.19. That's our utility scale renewable energy ordinance, a small amendment that staff was recommending, generated some discussion among some community members. So we have now tabled that, and that section amendment to 3.19 is not included in your packet and was not included in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation forwarded to you. So when we look at the findings required for a zoning ordinance text amendment, they are listed on the screen in front of you, items one, two, and three, that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance. Second one, that the change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. And the last one, that the change will not adversely affect the established character of a neighborhood, nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. By the way, these are the same findings that are required for a map amendment to the official zoning map. But the Planning and Zoning Commission was able to make these findings and, of course, recommend approval to you. And their recommendation response is included in this slide for each of those three required findings. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they did make the findings, and they forward a recommendation for approval of AM 2402. And in your packet, that is Ordinance 2024-04. And staff is happy to stand for questions, and of course, this is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. And now, time for a public hearing. The public hearing is open. We will now take comments. When you are called on to speak, announce your name and place of residence. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly will explain how those in person and those virtually can provide public comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to provide a comment regarding this public hearing item, you can make your way up to the podium. If you've joined us virtually, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us you'd like to speak. If you've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. We have no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
We'll give it one more minute to see if anybody emerges or is just having a hard time getting unmuted.
And there are no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
All right, thank you. In that case, I am now closing the public hearing. Supervisors, are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Horseman.
Yeah, Jess, I know this went to Planning and Zoning Commission, which I'm glad. And was there any, and I've taken a look at this, and obviously, without really going through the complete zoning ordinance, which I did not do again, you'll be happy to know. I just would love to hear what the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there were, what the discussions were, there were any in particular, they might have had some further discussion on it. I'd like to hear about that.
Absolutely. So thank you, Chair Vasquez and Supervisor Horseman. The one item they discussed was what was tabled, and they discussed supporting the concept of tabling item. I believe it's 3.19 from the Renewable Energy section of the zoning ordinance. There was a little discussion on amendments to the landscaping portion. So the updates to the landscaping portion, that is in Chapter, yes, of the zoning ordinance, those are to better encourage retention of native landscaping on properties and for better water conservation measures. So those are the, those are the benefits. There were a couple of questions on those amendments and of the discussion that took place, especially the commissioners who had lots of experience with reviewing these projects and even with development in the very diverse areas, climatic areas of our county, supported those landscape section amendments.
If I can.
Please.
Thank you. And just from reading this, like I said, without going through specifically the whole zoning ordinance, they appear to be very minor in nature. And I would basically make a finding consistent with the recommendation that came from our Planning and Zoning Commission, and that is that the changes that are being recommended are consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan and ordinance. I would also find, consistent with what's being presented on these changes, that the changes are not detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare of the public. And I would also find, consistent with the information as presented and the amendments, that the change will, in fact, not adversely affect the established character or community character and that there are no negative impact to properties based on the recommendations for changes that are being made.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members? Supervisor Hess.
Yes, thank you. I just like that we're trying to improve the process. I think we owe that to our constituents to make sure, instead of waiting a whole year to make any changes, we can act and, like you said here, be flexible and efficient. So I applaud that the zoning commission really pushed for something that we can improve our productivity. So shout out to them, good job, and keep it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? In that case, Supervisor Horseman?
At this time, then, I would make a motion that, in fact, we accept the findings and findings of fact required that there is, that we have met the findings of facts required for a zone change. And at this time, I would ask for the adoption of Ordinance 2024-04, amending the zoning ordinance text AM-24-002.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Next item, item 21, presentation, discussion, and possible direction regarding the county's required tenure update to the comprehensive plan. Long-range planner Melissa Shaw will present.
Well, good afternoon again, Board Supervisors. Melissa Shaw, long-range planner with community development. And I'm here to present an update for you on progress report on how the update to the comprehensive plan is going. We gave our last update to you in February and there's been a fair amount that has happened since then. But we'll talk today about, you'll hear a presentation from Dr. Fred Solup on results of a community-wide survey that was conducted in February. We'll give you an update on public outreach that we've engaged in since then and also an update on how the comprehensive plan advisory group was formed or has been formed. And then some information on basically county sustainability planning for the comprehensive plan update. So with that, I will turn this over to give you an update on the survey. That's an RBI.
Thank you. Supervisor Vasquez and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for having me here today to talk about a survey that we conducted for the comprehensive plan. My name is Fred Solup and we'll, we'll see that Dr. Nancy Wonders and I are the co-founders, co-directors of Global Local Vision. We are a social research firm here based in Flagstaff. And we conduct a lot of work with government agencies, nonprofit organizations, do a lot of work on policy issues. And in this situation, we were asked to conduct a survey as part of the comprehensive plan process. And I have to just applaud Melissa Shaw and her group for really doing an excellent job, reaching out to the public and, and trying to elicit input from many different angles. Because it's only through that process that you can validate findings or triangulate and validate findings across different mechanisms of public input. So we were asked to conduct a telephone survey of people living in unincorporated areas of the county, unincorporated areas of course, being people not living in Flagstaff, Williams, Fredonia, Tucson Page, et cetera. So we were looking at people in unincorporated areas of the county and we conducted a statistically valid survey, telephone survey of those residents. Surveys are an important tool for social science research. Telephone surveys are robust. They are typically used to, to gauge behaviors, to look at what people did in the past, why they did it, motivations, what they will do in the future. But we can also look at values. And that was a large purpose to the, the survey that we conducted. I think of this as a values validation process. As I said, Melissa Shaw and her group have been, they've been going around the county. They've been doing focus groups around the county, talking to many people, many different areas of the county and, and hearing what people have to say, what they love about living in the county, what their concerns are, what their vision for the future is. And now we took that information and distilled it into a telephone survey to go out to do a statistically valid survey to, to validate some of these values that were being picked up in the focus group research. So we conducted a statistically valid telephone survey. Survey questions were tested and they validated themes that emerged across 18 focus groups conducted during summer and fall 2023, winter 2024. Our survey was conducted in February of 2024, between February 3rd and February 19th. 400 randomly selected participants living in the unincorporated areas of the county participated in the survey. Both landline and cellular telephones were included in the study. Because this is a systematic, random sample of the population, the data that we're presenting today has a margin of error associated with it. The margin error is the wiggle room. We can say that with 400 participants in the survey process, we have a margin of error plus or minus 5% at a 95% confidence level. We first asked survey respondents, what do they like most about living in Coconino County? And, and it was interesting to see that one-third of, this was an open-ended question. One-third of participants mentioned something having to do with the environment, how beautiful the area is, the, the features of the area. People really appreciate living in Coconino County for the environment. 18%, almost one in five, said climate. And, and when we combine environment and climate together, we have over 50% saying really factors that for the most part are, are not controllable by the Board of Supervisors, by other government entities, the environment, climate. Over 50% are saying these are, are what they like most about living in Coconino County. About 18% said lifestyle. When people talk about lifestyle, they typically talk about living in a rural area, living in a western region of the country. Sometimes they talk about the freedom that's associated with living in that part of the country. 7% mentioned proximity, how close we are to the Grand Canyon, how close we are to other communities, whether it's Phoenix or Las Vegas, that we're centrally located. 7% mentioned outdoor recreation opportunities, and this included parks. 7% mentioned community. This is where their friends are. This is where their family are. And then a lesser group, 1% mentioned diversity, the diverse population county. 1% said they were here for jobs, economic opportunities. 5% something else, 3% don't know. So, so we get a portrait here of a community that really loves living here for the environment, for the climate, for the lifestyle. We asked our respondents, what is the most important issue facing the county over the next 20 years? And, and we asked actually, what is the most important issue? And then that's issue one. And then what's the second most important issue, issue two? We combined those to say percent of respondents mentioning each issue. About a third of respondents, little over a third of respondents, said managing growth is the most important issue facing this county over time. And, and growth involves a population, that there's more people moving in, that there are more buildings being, being developed, that there's more traffic, there's, it's getting more crowded. Third of the population wants to manage growth. A quarter of the population mentioned drought, concerns about drought and concerns about water availability into the future, looking again across the next 20 years. 22% mentioned infrastructure. They, they want to see, they're concerned about the infrastructure. The, the infrastructure, whether that's roads or services, needs to be tended to over the next 22 years, for the next 20 years. 14% mentioned the concerns about affordable housing. 11%, about one in 10, mentioned concerns over the next 20 years with wildfires, flooding and, and the relationship there, post wildfire flooding. 10% mentioned cost of living. We next asked people, we, we put out a list of characteristics of the county. This is a list that was generated by, by our group, working with Melissa and staff and what she was hearing from the focus groups. We generated a list of characteristics of the county. And, and we put those characteristics before people and we asked them to rate the importance of each characteristic on a scale from one through five. Five would be, this is very important to me. Zero or one would be, this is, this is not important whatsoever. And, and we can see here a ranking across the 400 population, 400 people that responded to the survey, a ranking of values. What do, what characteristics do people feel are important in Coconino County? And, and here again, we're seeing environment at the top of the list. Most importance of, to people is access to clean air and water, the natural environment. And, and if we look at this group, most responses were received over a four on our scale from one through five. And, and following access to clean air and water and natural environment, we had effective response to crisis and disaster. That was, this is something that's very valued by the public, that we have responded as a county to wildfires and post wildfire flooding. Access to quality healthcare is valued. Good roads, here again, infrastructure, quality educational opportunities, preservation of a rural lifestyle. Here's our lifestyle issue once again. And going down the list, also above 4.0, affordable housing, economic opportunities, parks and outdoor recreation opportunities. Also in the positive range, I would say positive level of importance would be 2.5 or over. Close-knit community and cultural diversity and a strong tourism industry. Again, these are characteristics that people living in unincorporated areas of Coconino County value. These, these are what's important. This is what's important to the population. Melissa and team have been going around the county, conducting focus groups. They've been doing an excellent job speaking to, to people throughout the county. And they came up with a list of values that they heard repeatedly in these focus group discussions. And this is our values validation process where we encapsulated those values into, we condensed them, encapsulated them into, into short phrases. And we presented those to the public and said, do you definitely share these values? Do you somewhat share these values? Do you not share these values at all? Or you don't know? And interestingly, again, we can see a ranking of values that are shared. But when you combine definitely share and somewhat share together, most values are ranking, in fact, all values are ranking in the 90th plus percentile range. Every value put forward is in the 90-plus percentile range. And even inclusion and diversity within our communities is, is at the 82 percentile range, so very high. So again, we can see an ordering of values shared. People again saying they share the value of healthy part, or healthy forests and decreased wildfire risks. They share the value of protecting the natural environment. They share the value of access to open spaces, trails, public lands. And going down the list, but still at a very high level, people share the value of an economy that supports communities. People share the value of a county that effectively responds to climate impacts. Share the value of tourists that respect people and our environment. Public services provided in consultation with local communities. And then sharing the value of inclusion and diversity within our communities. So looking at this in conjunction with the focus group report, we would say that the values that Melissa Shaw and team have heard throughout the county are validated by this survey. We created an open-ended question, just saying, what is your vision for the county over the next 20 years? Open-ended. Say as much as you want. And, and we distilled those comments down to, 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 to vision statements that are primary for people. And most statements, a quarter or plurality of statements, almost a quarter, had to deal with environmental protection and sustainable growth. There is about 13% mentioned infrastructure and transportation. 11% affordable housing and cost of living. 10% of comments involved economic development and jobs. And I would just draw your attention to the bottom of this table, N equals 537. Recall that we spoke to 400 people. So people gave us long responses to this question and, and they could have two visions associated within the same response, or three. And we calculated, we included each of those visions. Interestingly, when you, when you look across this, that the, the response that's most provided by one, here, one quarter of the population deals again with economic or environmental protection and sustainable growth. But then we see roughly, in a, in a general sense, one in 10 answering infrastructure, transportation, affordable housing, economic development. When I look at that, I say, there is no one common vision for this county over the next 20 years. There's, there's diverse visions for this county. There's a multiplicity of visions for this county. And that's important when, when talking about a comprehensive plan, when talking about where the county is going. The county needs to go into multiple directions at the same time. And to think of that as the goal, there isn't any one particular focus being called for by the people living in the, the unincorporated areas. Finally, we put out some program areas. We said, the county is considering investments, additional investments in these program areas. Do you support or oppose additional investments in these areas? And that these, this list was developed by Melissa Shaw's team, we're talking to staff. And we put out again, reducing risk of wildfires and flooding. That received the greatest support, 94% for additional investments in that area. Affordable housing, nine in 10 said, yes, we support more money being put into affordable housing. Connecting pathways, so this was access to trails and equestrian pathways throughout the county. 83% said they support additional funding in that area. 80% said they support additional investments in public transport. So again, the county is considering investing money in different programs. These areas are supported. Any questions or thoughts that you'd like to share about the survey?
Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting to see what those long-term goals of our community are. Sustainability and growth, definitely high up there. So appreciate seeing that come out in the data. Are there any other questions or comments by board members at this time? Supervisor Hess.
Yes, thank you. That was a great presentation. And that, that phone call, it seems like it wasn't too long. I think a lot of times you'll probably lose someone if the call, it was about 10 minutes, you said?
It was about 11 minutes.
11 minutes? Okay. Of all the data you gave us, were there questions that were too low on there? Or were those all the questions that were on?
This, this is a comprehensive look at all the questions. There were demographic questions that came at the end of the survey and we use those to cross-tabulate responses by gender, by education, for instance. And that information is in your packet.
Oh, excellent. That, that was a good presentation and that was, that was a good in-depth without getting too in-depth on the person, I guess, just on what their vision is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brigade.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to know, how big of an area did you guys survey?
Well, we, we covered the entire county, but we were only looking at the unincorporated areas. So we withdrew people living in incorporated areas. We screened for that at the very beginning of the survey. But we included the entire county in this, in this effort.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thank you. And this is really important information. I'm so glad to receive this. I would request, some of it, I think it was two, got cut off on the information we were presented. So it'd be great to get another copy of this. I'd really like to keep this. I think this is important information as we move forward with other issues. And as we look at other issues here in Coconino County. So it'd be nice to get a kind of a clean copy, if you will. And I do note that some of the issues are overlapping. For example, we have affordable housing, I guess, 14%, cost of living, 10%. Affordable housing, cost of living, of course, are overlapping. And, and I would imagine that the respondents mentioning the issues, they might almost use them interchangeably. Would you, I mean, is that something for some of the others as well?
Absolutely. And when coding open-ended questions, there are decisions that the researcher makes and how to present, where, where people fall, what categories they fall into, how to combine categories and where, where, where people's ideas are being represented best. So there, there are, there may be overlapping categories.
Any other questions? Supervisor Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question. I just really liked this survey that was done. It really... And, and then... And, and then focusing on the unincorporated communities, you know, just really the value of the, our environment just goes back to how our population really values our public lands and being able to live right next to these public lands that we have. And being able to, and that's where the economy comes from as well. So I think that it just really, what we're seeing, what we're, the way that we're working on, I guess, out to, and the services that we provide, it really does just, it, it just verifies it all again. And I just really like it. I, I, I guess I need to really look at the, the, the report and just want to take a little time to, to go over it again and just to understand, give it some more, to really see what my thoughts are. But it's just, I really like it though. Thank you. I just, I, I think that it just was such a great presentation and people really caring about the environment, the climate. This is all just where we live. People just, and then outdoor recreation, it's all the same, you know? Proximity, yeah, you know, I, it's like, just really, it's really, it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just really appreciate the perspective of what's gone out. 500 constituents or 400 and some constituents answering is a significant number. And it's good to get that information so that as we move forward and start crafting how this comprehensive plan goes moving forward, we've incorporated that voice in our decision and our policymaking. So thank you for that presentation. Any other questions or comments at this time?
Just appreciate.
Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, Melissa just handed me a copy of the report that we produced. And this report is in your packet. So you have the full reporting of questions, answers to the questions, demographics, a breakout of the answers by demographic.
Great. Thank you for all the information.
Thank you.
If we can get the PowerPoint done a little bit smaller so that it doesn't, I, I don't know about yours. Mine's all cut, mine's cut off for a lot of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Okay, so now discussion regarding the 20, the Coquenano County fiscal year budget 2025. Did we have anything else we had to do? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Go ahead, please.
An in-house survey just for county departments to identify what plans, programs, and initiatives are addressing climate change resilience and sustainability. And then that can provide an opportunity to coordinate with those plans and provide a potential framework for what a plan might look like moving forward for the county specifically. And then this could be included as a future action item in the 10-year implementation plan or the comprehensive plan update. So just a way to get a little bit more direction as far as where the county might want to go with a sustainability plan or whatever we're to be. So that for you is just a very quick update in terms of the comprehensive plan and what we have been since February. I couldn't answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for bringing us the update to the comprehensive plan. As many of you might know, it's quite an involved process and we've had quite a lot of folks from each district contributing and having those community meetings and discussing what this is going to look like moving forward. And so really appreciate your work and efforts in coordinating and leading this and look forward to seeing the progress moving forward. Are there any other questions or comments? Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thanks Melissa. And yes, you and your team have done a great job in terms of the outreach on this comprehensive plan and I've gotten a lot of positive feedbacks from, you know, members of the community, which is wonderful. I don't need it here right now, but I'd love to get a list of the 11 members on the advisory group. Love to see who they are.
Look at that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? Supervisor Hess?
Yes, thank you. Good presentation. It was excellent information and I was lucky enough to attend the open house. So again, I appreciate you inviting me to that and I got to meet a lot of people and talk a lot about community development and what you guys are working towards. And I like that you're really trying to reach out, to give the information, and we need that information. So again, we're hitting it from multiple locations, including the county fair. So continue the hard work and we'll keep applying it. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Vice Chair Brigade?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Melissa. I had a chance to sit in on one of these and I really enjoyed it, just a lot of interaction and just making, it's a plan of the people that we, that you went out to go and meet and get them involved. And so I just want to say thank you. That was something that I felt that this would be a good plan coming out because it's the people's plan out there. You know, basically that's what it is. And so I just want to say thank you so much for getting the communities involved and certainly, you know, I appreciate all the work that was done, a lot of traveling I know that was done. So and thank you to your department and your staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I don't know if Supervisor Fowler is still on the line?
She was able to jump back on by phone, so she is on.
Okay Supervisor Fowler, would you like to make any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, the internet went out again. So thank you for all your work and really going out and doing the community outreach and with this is done throughout the, you know, every 10 years. And so this is so important that we, we hear from the community and you're providing that on the various ways that you're, you're reaching out as well, you know, having these meetings in the community as well as doing the survey by phone and just, just the different methods you're using. So just want to thank you for it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. In that case, thank you for the update. Look forward to seeing the progress as we move forward. Thank you. Okay, next up, we're a little bit ahead of schedule and I'm not sure if we're time sensitive or not, if this is a good time to take a bio break, five minutes? All right, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break so that way we can get our stuff ready for the next, next presentation. Thank you. We'll be all right. We'll, we'll get through this. All right, I believe we're ready to continue. We are now on item 30, 22, discussion regarding Kokona County Fiscal Year 2025 Budget, including fiscal year 2025 budget assumptions and department district agency budgets and increment requests. And I'll hand it over to our county manager and finance staff to present.
Thank you Chair Vasquez, Vice Chair Brigade, members of the board. This item, we had scheduled it to continue to discuss the flood control district budget. As you may recall, Lucinda Andriani was unable to join us last week and she is unable to join us today. And in essence, for the flood control district, what we need to discuss is the 10-year financial plan for the flood control district and it is not significantly sequential to the, to the budget adoption. So in essence, at some point, we need to talk about how the funds would be distributed between flood control projects and forest restoration in the 10-year financial plan for the flood control district, as well as a general fund loan payback discussion. Again, we can recommend a budget to be approved and adopted to the Board of Supervisors without having first, without having first have to have that discussion. We do have the tentative budget adoption on June 4th. Finance staff is currently preparing the numbers for that based on all the conversations that we had over the course of the last couple of weeks associated with the budget. So with that, we do not have any specific details to present to you today and we will be coming to you with a tentative budget recommendation on June 4th at 10 a.m.
All right. Thank you for that. So we'll move on from budget item 22 and we'll continue that conversation next week on June 4th. Let's see, we have already done our federal, state and federal legislative and administrative matters. Is there anything else on the county manager's office to go over?
We can talk about on the next item, the planning calendar just for a bit prior to you as a board getting into roundtable. So we've already gone over item number 23, Gregory and Keith, as well as Karen Cruz, our state contracted advocate, gave a really great presentation to you today as we prepare our legislative agendas for both the state and federal levels going forward. So item number 24 is a planning calendar and we can talk about that just briefly if you'd like.
Yes.
All right. Thank you Chair Vasquez. So today's May 21st, a very good day of covering the county business on many levels and with the highlight being the recognition of the coconuts and, and I'm not crying, you're crying. That was really moving and it was, it's just spectacular. It's, and so just applaud their efforts as a team and, and then we also had the zoning ordinance, the minor, the, the minor amendment to the major amendment. And so we, right, so, and then, and then we'll have roundtable after this. Tendative budget adoption, June 4th, as well as the Fort Tet Hill Park Master Plan and the Frontiery Master Plan. As some of you know, Chair Vasquez has been involved, the Frontiery Master Planning effort is underway and it's a really healthy process in terms of what community members, parks and recreation commissioners, wildlife advocates, et cetera, would, would like to see at that property and, and some, some items that are really starting to surface is how to activate that property without it being too active so as to disturb the natural wonder that is that place. And so that's really starting to surface with that effort. And then Gregory and Keith will be back with the NACO resolutions as we prepare for the summer NACO conference. Yeah.
People are planning to go to that summer conference.
Show of hands please.
Maybe just two of us. I'm not sure if Supervisor Fowler is.
I'm not clear if she is either. We'll, we'll talk to her about that. So it may be just to, and it might not be as large of a turnout given that it is, this is election season.
She is on.
In Florida.
Yeah.
She's on the.
Yeah Supervisor Fowler, if you're on, do you plan to go to the NACO conference in Florida in July, July 12th through the 15th? So we'll be preparing resolutions for that. Here's Gregory with the most.
Yes, I am. I'm me. Hello?
Yeah. So, so yes, go ahead Gregory.
Chair Vasquez, county manager, county manager Bertelson, we do have four board members attending.
We can hear you Lena. You, we did hear that you are going to NACO in July?
Okay, I was, all right, yes. I am, I am going to attend and I am, we're going to have the Native American or Native Leaders meeting again there.
Treasure Benatar will also be attending.
And it's, it sounds like Treasure Benatar may have a resolution as well.
She, she does. It's very similar to the resolution she had introduced as an interim resolution in her finance committee on preserving local control and the ability for fiduciaries to manage assets in the best interest of local communities.
So possibly Gregory, we can ask her to come to our NACO resolutions conversation or at least have her resolution available.
Absolutely. She's still working on it with her staff right now, but can certainly invite her for the June 4th meeting. I am scheduled to meet with her next week.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update.
And then of course, this weekend, we have the, it's a holiday weekend, Memorial Day, so many people will be celebrating that. After June 4th, we have June 11th. It is a 6 p.m. regular meeting. Not a lot of items on the agenda with this one. In fact, was just trying to speak with Christopher Tressler, our community, our Public Works Director, as well as Jay Crystalman, our Community Development Director. There is a public hearing on that one and abandonment. I'm not real clear on that item, so we'll get more information on that. And then in speaking with Christopher Tressler, as well as our Assistant County Engineer Nate Reisner, talking about our Public Works grant items for transportation. So Gregory's really done a good job of getting our group together and really forming a group to talk about all of the grant opportunities and funding opportunities throughout all of the agencies and our strategy and plan for addressing. Gregory, anything to add with that?
Yeah, I just saw Christopher in the hallway actually and got to check in with him. We are looking at a small 30-minute work session on June 11th to go over the grant applications that Public Works is making, as well as how that interfaces with their long-term planning in preparation for the FY 25 ARTAC requests that are due. Those are due to NACOG by June 21st and Metro Plan in August. So we would also be inviting the Metro Plan Partners, as well as the NACOG Jennifer O'Connor and Executive Director Fetzer.
I can, Chair.
Supervisor Horstman?
If June 11th is light, it might be a really good time for an update on the expenditure limit, where we are, just to kind of get some involvement here.
Yeah, it is currently shaping up to be pretty light, so I think we can do that. And before we get to that, wanted to applaud Gregory for getting our group together and Public Works Nate is really, Nate Reisner is really doing a great job of tracking all of the grant opportunities. And you all know, as your involvement through our, whether it's Northern Arizona Council of Governments, or Metro Plan, or Rural Transportation Advisory Council, and as those federal funds flow through the system or state funds in some cases, Nate's doing a really good job of tracking those and aligning projects to those opportunities. So, and then also, we will get with County Manager Peru and look at bringing a, an expenditure limitation update on June 11th as well.
Yes, thankful, thank you for that. We definitely want to make sure that we're having those conversations about expenditure limit, educating the public on where we're at and where we plan to go with that. So, thank you.
Okay, so, and then June 25th is our budget adoption. County Manager Peru is very much looking forward to being with you on that date for the, for the budget adoption on June 25th. And then we always, we always say board meeting break July 1 through August 8th. We know with, with us, there's not always much of a break, but, but it, it is helpful to give us a little time and space in the summer to not have our regular meetings and give us an opportunity to work on other things as we may need to be working on those.
Like going to Florida?
Or going to Florida in July. Like Steph City Council has this sort of same break period as well. And then of course, on July 30th is the primary election day, so that's a very important date that, that you all will have circled on your calendars. With the canvassing of that election on August 9th, and then currently looking at the board retreat, and we had scheduled this, I think, last fall maybe? I don't recall the time, August 9th and August 10th. And maybe we need to look at our calendars and determine our availability for those.
You know, August 10th is not going to work for, many of us have that monsoon picnic that will be important for us to be at.
Okay.
And so I think we really need to look at a different date.
Okay. So if we could ask staff to look at some alternative dates and then we can discuss it at the next board meeting.
Sounds good Chair Vasquez. And if anything, what we've ended up doing more recently is had our retreat dates on at least the Friday if we can before the weekend. And so we'll possibly look at your calendars for the August 9th and if we can carve out some space with one another, we could do it during that time without this Saturday. So we will look at that, see what may be available.
Supervisor Horstman?
And if I may, and I know this has been brought up by other supervisors as well, but I think that we have in the past totally and appropriately and necessarily have used our quote retreat time, which really has turned into an extended special board meeting. And I think they were important and so I'm not in any way, shape or form indicating otherwise. I think they were important, but I also think it's important that, and some of us as supervisors have said this, that we really have a retreat, that it not take place in our boardroom or upstairs in our executive session room, but that we actually leave the county building and leave our offices behind and go forward into a, another space that we can be comfortable and, and do more of a retreat type of atmosphere and handle more broad-ranging topics and more retreat type of, of topics. So just my thoughts. And by the way, if we need additional board meetings, I'm totally, if necessary, in these special board meetings to handle very important issues that are coming forward before the county, I'm all for that too. It's just, I think a retreat is something different and I'd love to get into more of a retreat mode.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. Any other comments from board members? All right, sounds like we all agree. And if staff could please look at some alternative dates or alternative propositions for that board meeting, knowing that August 10th will probably not work for a board meeting retreat and so we'd have to look at another date.
Duly noted Chair Vasquez and members of the board. One thing I, I, so we have jail district remodel expansion project on August 13th. I did pass that over. It is also on June 4th. We'll need to follow up with the sheriff's office if we want to have that discussion on that June 4th date. You'll recall that the sheriff had made mention of it during his budget conversation with you. And so we need to track that and determine when the best time they, what the best time would be for them to have the conversation with the board about potential expansion project with the jail district. Also, I did pass over, and I not meaning to do so, the Anti-Hunger Summit in Flagstaff is on May 23rd. Ethan actually reached out to us. He would really like our involvement with that, so I'm hopeful that.
I'm planning to go as well.
Yeah, I'm going to do morning, but I can't do the afternoon.
Thank you. Really appreciate Ethan's leadership with that and so thank you for, so I think we'll stop there and then allow, allowing you to get into roundtable and let us know if there's anything we need to follow up on.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. So last item on the agenda for today is our favorite roundtable, which we haven't done in a while. So let's try to keep it not too, yeah, short and sweet, like, because I know we have a lot to talk about. try to keep it uh, not too yeah, short and sweet, like, because I know we have a lot to talk about, but please give us your priorities. And with that said, who would like to go first? Supervisor Hess.
I'll go first because I'm short and sweet. Um, I know, right? Tall and bitter. Um, um, it's been a busy while since we've done roundtable. Uh, just to hit the highlights, um, I got to do the, the jail tour finally, and it's really, really important to see how we're interacting with and how we're trying to uh, work with the county, with the community on, you know, how we have them in jail and what they're doing and how we want to get them back out of the community, uh, back into the community, sorry. Um, having them in the jail isn't the goal. Having them be rehabilitated and back out and and productive is the goal. And I really think we've got a great look at that. I know most of you have already done the jail tour, so I was very honored that they took their time to give me the jail tour. Um, I did get a chance to get over to Williams, and I met with the the mayor, and I also got to meet with the city manager, and I was lucky enough to uh, ride over there with county manager. So we had, we had an opportunity to talk on the way there, and then he got to interact with the city manager. So that was very good. I, I, it's good to start meeting those people in my district and within the county. Um, so that was very good. The sl- uh, STEM celebration at, at Tut Hill, it was a rainy day. It was a cold day, but I got some ice cream anyways uh, with my kids. Uh, my kids had a great time out there and shot a rocket and you know, we all got to do the interview on CAF, so that was uh, or just more of just a discussion. Um, but so that was very fun. Again, it was good. It's great to see the STEM. We got to do that today with the coconuts, so it's awesome to see kids that are really working to, to move forward and and just trying to get as much information as possible. So that was, that was very fun. Um, I was lucky enough to be invited and I had an opportunity to go to the open house for community development. So I got to interact with a lot of people. Uh, we talked about solar with a gentleman, got to talk about a- anything and everything. It was very fun. I, I uh, got some pizza and then I, I snuck out of there. Um, but I, I got to photo ops. Um, probably the biggest thing I got to go to was the Overland Expo this weekend, and the biggest, I mean, that's the biggest thing we have going on. Uh, there was, I think they said thirty thousand a day out there. Um, so got to go out there and really enjoy that um, and see how that works. I haven't been able to go to that yet. Uh, buddy of mine came into town and he's a big overland guy, big shout out to Dan, and uh, he bought a really, really, really nice tent, and he's looking forward, and he says I can use the little tent that he is replacing. So thanks, Dan. Um, and finally, probably the, one of the best things I got to do was go out to Muntz Park and, and, and we got to, as a county, really um, be part of their community meeting. And uh, I was lucky enough to talk at the end of that. I mean, it was very impressive to see how that community is very involved with knowledge, knowing what's going on in their community. Um, we got to have Public Works there, Emergency Management, the sheriff got to talk. Um, uh, then APS was there to kind of tell them what they're working on uh, as far as in an emergency. And it's really just great to see a community that supports their, themselves and and the growth of their community. So keeping it short, that's all I've got, Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for going first and getting us started. Who would like to go next? Vice Chair Brigade.
Okay. Thank you. Basically, um, of course, we were very busy with our budget presentations and um, and then also having long days and to the evening sometime, you know, just to get the budgets uh, presented to us by departments within Coquenino County. And this will be for F Y twenty-two-five. So that took a lot of um, prep and um, they and really um, getting the numbers down and, you know, um, just seeing what, what, what we can do or consider. So that, that was a, a big task. And, and then also that is uh, one of our primary um, uh, duties and responsibilities as a, a board of supervisors. So um, but it, and also we um, had um, for Western Navajo Agency, they had a national older Americans um, celebration month that was for this month, and they had this was this, um, they, they had get-togethers in over, um, let's see where is it? Um, Bird Springs um, over the weekend. And so they really helped them out and talked to them about self-care and wellness and and how to be, how to stay safe. And of course, there were other activities that, that happened um, uh, during that time. So just re- basically, basically just getting all the elders involved, you know, and they had um, a luncheon and stuff like that. So it was a understanding that, you know, that they had a lot of fun there. Um, and so that, that's one. And then um, I just want to say a belated uh, Happy Mother's Day to everyone, uh, all the Cocon County employees and others that are, are uh, are moms, you know. And unfortunately, some people will have their moms with them, and it was kind of hard, but you know, nonetheless, you know, I think it's to have to have. Okay, so, so anyway, I just want to say happy uh, belated Mother's Day. And of course, there were a lot of graduations going on, you know, everywhere, um, uh, Tubus City, a lot of invitations, and I had a chance to go out, and I just want to congratulate all the um, uh, students that were promoted from the eighth grade and also um, graduated from the high school. So and even from colleges, um, then you um, in other colleges throughout the state, I just want to say congrats. Um, and then um, we are going to be having an upcoming Forest Lake Community Cleanup on June eleventh through the sixteenth and um, down in Forest Lake. And I just want to uh, thank uh, my colleagues here for their donation, you know, to help us to make, make this happen. And uh, Mother Nature is something that we need to really take care of, and so that's what we're going to be doing. Um, Stardust Trail Road Reconstruction Shoulder Widening Project in Donnie Park and the Hutton Road Project. I just want to say thanks to the um, all the public work staff, you know, regarding that and all the efforts that were done by soliciting dollars, you know, to, through the county to get that, that worked on. So I just want to say thank you so much. And then the Army Corps of Engineers, um, uh, they're doing a comprehensive, I mean, a community response plan with Mon Kope, the villages of Mon Kope and um, and so we went to the meeting and find out that they um, they, the Mon Kope and various part of the um, uh, county did not have a response plan. So um, we got involved as, as a county, and um, we scheduled another meeting for all of them. You know, like upper Mon Kope, lower Mon Kope and other um, areas of the chapters, you know, just, just getting them involved, you know, to create a, a, a response plan altogether. And then this also uh, included mitigating and any emergencies, including like nas- natural disasters, everything that has to do with an emergency response plan. And they did hire um, uh, consultants, you know, to do that, and they've been meeting with them. So that, that's something that I, I really um, liked. So that is in a nutshell. Of course, we still have um, meetings that we go to. Um, chapter meetings, planning meetings, and other meetings, library board meeting that we're at too, basically just talk to them about the budget and their needs and the book mobile that we uh, discussed during our uh, budget presentations. And so I just want to say that is my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, who would like to go next? Supervisor Horseman.
All right. You all were very quick. I'll have to try to be, try to be as quick as well. So, but boy, it has been one very busy start of the summer, and I think we're hearing that from my colleagues here, and um, I think it's only going to develop as we move forward. Um, I was very pleased to be involved with uh, Metro Plan and Art X on the city and the county and our local artists for uh, the street painting, asphalt painting, traffic calming on Fremont Boulevard, right next to uh, Cheshire Park. And I want to thanks all, thank everyone who participated. There must have been three to four hundred um, residents, artists, community members who took part in that. And I want to thank our staff who helped me hand out popsicles. I know Supervisor Vasquez and, and Cindy and Angie and Jen, so a big thank you to all of them. Uh, also was able to partake and even shake, you know, was able to get a little jig in there with the chair for the Fiesta de Mayo. Uh, and of course, uh, Coquenino County are proud sponsors of that. It was wonderful to see the community come out and enjoy the Fiesta. I know it's been five years since uh, they've been able to have that Fiesta, and I'm really glad that um, my colleagues all participated in sponsoring that. So thank you. Also was involved with Wags and Whiskers Pet Adoption this weekend. Uh, and once again, appreciate everybody who came out, met the uh, animals and hopefully took one home. Um, my dog was not pleased that I didn't arrive home with one, but um, uh, at least one other two-legged member of my house was happy I didn't come home with a dog. Um, I also was able to participate with all uh, of my colleagues in the stand-down we had for our veterans uh, at the Armory. And that was very important and an important part of recognizing the service uh, and recognizing and honor uh, those that have uh, served our country. So was pleased to participate in that. Also with uh, my colleagues was able to participate in the multicultural park sculpture event at the Archileta Park in celebration of uh, diversity. Uh, and if you haven't been out there to look at the new public installation of art, please go out. It'll be the, the sculptures will be on display for the next year. And then they'll rotate and get uh, another group of artists to uh, provide art in the park. Uh, they're really wonderful. Uh, and uh, I would highly recommend that you take the time. Weather's beautiful. Go on out and take a look at the public art. Um, also, I was invited to participate in an event that NASA held at USGS. It was a combination between USGS and Babbitt Ranches uh, and basically honoring uh, uh, the connection between Flagstaff and particularly Babbitt Ranches and uh, our astronauts. As you know, every astronaut that ever walked on the moon trained here in Coquenino County. And uh, the next generation of soon-to-be moon astronauts, the Artemis Crew is also training here in Coquenino County and specifically on Babbitt Ranches. And Babbitt Ranches and of course, here in Northern Arizona, we offer a landscape uh, both in scale size and uh, geography and I'm sorry, geology that really is conducive to training for walking on the moon and for uh, engaging in activities on the moon. And I just want to have a big shout out to Babbitt Ranches. I mean, think about this. They have started in basically cowboys driving cattle. They went then to the next step of providing renewable energy for Arizona and our country through their solar and wind programs. And of course, they're working with NASA and helping to train the next generation of a moon astronauts. So big shout out to um, Babbitt Ranches for their innovation to show what the next generation of ranching in fact looks like. Um, just, I have all kinds of other things, but I, I just will state that I uh, attended W I R in Yosemite, as you know, I sit on the W I R Board and was through my colleagues and the other colleagues here, uh, supervisors in the state of Arizona, was re-elected to the W I R Board. Thank you, uh, colleagues for um, your vote and for uh, attending the W I R Conference with me in Yosemite. Uh, very important for us to discuss issues that are important to us here in the West, including uh, gateway communities and recreation and uh, economic development, housing, affordable housing, et cetera. So excellent um, uh, excellent conference that we had. Also attended the B L M. As you know, I sit on the B L M rack. And um, we're talking about something again, important to all of us, and that's public lands and the need to be able to maintain and afford to maintain the infrastructure on our public lands. So a couple of events that are coming up, just to talk about uh, that you may want to participate in, members to the board and also community. Tonight, the Dark Sky Coalition is doing a piano in the dark, and they're bringing a uh, grand piano up to Buffalo Park and will be playing various uh, symphonies, sonatas, et cetera. Uh, uh, that uh, in promotion of our dark skies. So wonderful time to be, be able to hear incredible music under the stars. Uh, also this Friday, the Museum of Northern Arizona is recognizing the Dragon Map, and for you river runners, you all know what the Dragon Map is. It was a multi um, um, geologist collection and students from N A U collection to get a mapping, the first geological mapping of the Grand Canyon uh, used by probably every river runner since the nineteen seventies forward. And they're going to be honoring that uh, this Friday. And Movies on the Square starts on Saturday. So I know Coquenino County and my colleagues are all sponsors of the Movies on the Square. So it's good, free, family fun. And uh, hopefully you'll be able to take in a show uh, there in Heritage Square. So a lot's going on this summer, and I know that each one of uh, my colleagues here in the Board of Supervisors have been actively involved in um, seeing the, the start of the summer and uh, look forward to one of my favorite times of year here in Flagstaff. So thank you and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler, District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will. Yeah, it's been pretty busy, huh? Yeah, I know we're all very busy. Uh, so thanks for allowing me to um, give a little update. We had our um, first responders. Spring is always so busy. We have our um, Colorado Plateau First Responders um, gathering that we did, we do every year and on an annual basis. I started that with um, uh, in two thousand twelve with Glen Canyon Recreation. Um, and it's and it's still going to this day, and it's been, it's really great because we bring all the um, law enforcement and first responders, dispatchers together, and we just have a s- short meeting. This year's presentation was so interesting um, given by our Sheriff's Department. And um, and then we have a, the real meeting is actually the cookout where everybody gets together and they're able to network and catch up with uh, um, with each other. So that was um, that was a a real good meeting we did. Um, we also have our taxes. We completed all the taxes. And we now are doing taxes year-round. Um, so it's been really great. I want to thank um, Miranda uh, from the Public Works for really working with us and um, just being able to um, coordinate the, the program for us. Oh, everybody's volunteer on that, on, on the taxes. It's a volunteer effort and um, want to thank our county manager for making sure that we, we, we make it a success for, uh, a successful program. We are now um, we're, we're very busy with working with the um, Health Department on doing a lot of the applications for the um, assistance that we offer in our Tubus City Office. We've been very busy with that. Of course, the birth certificate is still go- ongoing. We're working on broadband. We're still working on broadband. Navajo Nation uh, broadband office is fully developed now, and now we are really working a lot closer and there, we're trying to, we're kind of moving the broadband meetings over to them to coordinate all of that. So that's been um, really a great relief for them to actually come in. And then the Page um, Justice Court, uh, Judge Maya Rodriguez, uh, she's doing um, court in Kaibato. We, we're working with her on that and getting that word. We're we're working with her on that and getting that word out. Um it's going to be on June third from one to four and the Kaibato Chapter House. So people can call in and register to um to participate or address their cases. We get a lot of people calling in from um from other places to see if they could resolve their issues, like from Phoenix, even Utah, and you know, these are um but they can only address the Page Justice Courts. Of course, we'll be doing the Tubus City Court again too at some at some point. And um and then we have our Star Party that's going to be coming up. And we're going to have that again um on the Navajo Bridge in October. Uh it's first weekend in October. That's when we're going to do that. We work really closely with the Tubus City um fire, I mean Police District, Fire District and the whole team there. And we just did a Law Day on May tenth, and it was really um it was it turned out really well. So we and then we we have our meetings for coming up now for planning. Now we're planning for next year and we're in a planning stage now working on the Western Navajo Fair and these other events that are coming up like Fourth of July. Um and July third, we have the Tubus City Fireworks. We start at that um uh two thousand ten. Uh and thanks to Margaret over what the uh risk management, she really helped us um start that um Tubus City Fireworks um way back when we used to do all the applications and everything. Now we hand it over to the chapter and the chapter is the one that Tubus City Chapter is the one that does all the um all the detail work on it. And we but we still support that event and it's turned into a big event. We also working on and I want to um thank John with our Economic Development um Director for working with us and really taking and helping us to put a working group together for the Economic um Outdoor Economic Conference that we're putting together. We have it for October twenty ninth to the thirtieth, um twenty eighth to the thirtieth. Uh and then the thirty first is when the um the balloon regatta would start to right up to November third. So those are some of the things that we're working on. Uh oh, and then I was appointed by the Governor to the Arizona Route sixty-six Centennial Coordination Group Meeting. We have our first meeting on on June fourth in Kingman, so I'll be um headed that way. So there'll there'll be a very quick report on my. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, now I'm gonna have to cut down my report because everybody went so fast. Well, first off, I'd just like to say thank you, everyone. It's been quite a quite a busy last month, a lot of things happening. Uh in particular, working on the succession planning and and making sure that that went smoothly. And so I was supposed to go to WIR but decided to stay just to to help smooth that transition as we got ready for the the vote and and moving forward uh last week. Also helping with uh with budget. It's uh it's quite a lot of work when you're Chair, working through the budget, so. As my first one is Chair being bud uh being chaired during budget, it was quite a lot of work. But I I feel uh confident and comfortable that we're getting where we need to be for that final budget. And so it was good to get through that last week and and finish our budget budget presentations. Um as mentioned earlier, I I had the opportunity on Saturday or sorry, back Wednesday to go with the team to go to the stand-down, which was great to see all all the services that are being provided for our veterans and to be there with our colleague as he uh he read his his proclamation for military awareness. That was awesome and and it was great to see such a great county presence at the stand-down uh from the County Attorney's Office, the the Veterans Court and whatnot. So it was really cool to to hear and learn about all the different all the different resources provided for our veterans. Uh then the next day I wrote drove down to CSA and accompanied my colleague and we we had the opportunity to to listen to some of our state legislators, give us updates on the budget and kind of where things are at. Uh the one the one area that uh was mentioned uh yeah, was was that the uh the budget's coming along and and uh it's not done yet. It's later than it should be, but uh we we're holding out hope that things will uh get done soon. Then on Friday, we had the reception for the Multicultural Park Sculpture Exhibition exhibition at uh Lizard Archuleta Park. And if you haven't been to the exhibition, I definitely recommend that you go check it out. There's some really cool three-dimensional sculptures that provide some really cool artwork and reflective of different cultures in the area. And it's really well-done tying in to uh the Lizard Archuleta Park uh with artwork that's already there. And there's a cool QR code that you can go to and and get learn more information about about all the different uh pieces that reflect different cultural backgrounds. Um I also had the opportunity on Friday to meet with uh our Rural Broadband Manager, Mary Knight, and Mount Fowler from IT, our Director of IT, uh to learn updates on broadband and just seeing where we're going. It was really cool to see the maps of coverage of where we have coverage and where we don't have coverage and areas where it looks like we have coverage, but we might not really have coverage. And so we're working to tease all that out to make sure that everywhere has access to funding for coverage. Because right now there's some duplicate areas and those duplicate areas, when that happens, means that they won't be eligible for future funding because according to what the government's maps say is they already have coverage. And so there was a challenge process and there were uh opportunities for community members to mention if they were mapped as having uh access, that they really don't. And so they're going through that process and it will be really interesting to see how the maps change now that there's been community feedback. So look, stay tuned because there's a lot coming up with with broadband. Uh and then on Saturday, uh we we as part of Metro Plan, Supervisor Horseman and I were were able to be at the the Metro Plan Slow Streets Fremont Boulevard Block Party in the Cheshire neighborhood. And it was really cool to to see that artwork come together. Uh there were quite a few volunteers and they plowed through it. And within three hours, the majority of the artwork was done and it was it was amazing. And and so uh I definitely recommend that folks go check it out. I definitely hope that there we can replicate this project in other places because it's a great example of public art helping support public safety. And so uh really excited that that Metro Plan was also was able to do this. Also want to congratulate uh Metro Plan with their support. Uh we got a grant for Coconino County for uh transportation, but on uh on um multimodal uh grant for seven hundred, seven hundred and some change thousand dollars. And so that was with Metro Plan's support and we look forward to implementing that grant. And I also understand Metro Plan was also awarded another uh multimodal grant in addition. And so uh some good stuff happening in Metro Plan, helping us get funding for planning for our different transportation needs and looking at multimodal transportation, not just uh transportation for cars. Uh and then, of course, it was uh Saturday and Sunday was the big Fiesta de Mayo for the Sunside Neighborhood Association. That was a lot of fun. I know I was there for about sixteen hours all weekend. I want to thank everybody who showed up, who was part of it, who contributed, who donated to to help support it. It was definitely a big county presence there and a big county sponsorship and support for the event. And it was a lot of fun. And I must tell you, having uh grown up and lived on the east side of Flagstaff for thirty-five years and knowing that this festival hadn't happened in five years, you could tell the community needed this. It was a lot of fun. It had live music all all both days and there was a full-on carnival. And the kids just had a blast. I don't think I got out of there until ten o'clock Sunday night, you know. It was it was good stuff and it was nice to have it right there on Forest Street. So again, great job, Sunside Neighborhood Association. And thank you all of you, uh staff and volunteers and everybody who helped participate to make that such a great event. Uh let's see. Yes, and Supervisor Horseman danced with me. It was a lot of fun. And I got to tell you, my feet really hurt yesterday. I I did want to put a shout out to the Pepsi Amphitheater. I had the opportunity to go to the Gypsy Kings Show with my family uh on the eleventh. And that was uh now the second time I'd actually been at that show, but it was pretty cool. And and uh I just want to say thank you for for the the management that that brings in all these cool acts, for bringing such a such a wide variety of acts that really have a uh an impressive economic impact for our community. And uh every 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 so often, we get some updates and reports of the economic impact of those folks who come from out of town to come to these shows, and it's pretty significant. And so we're grateful that we're able to attract such uh great acts to our our local community. Uh and then I also wanted to uh just mention that uh that I've been part a of a um of a mentorship program for fifth grade at Puente de Hojo. And today, the fifth graders uh were doing their presentations to the community. And it was really cool. Different different folks chose different topics that they wanted to present about, put together a PowerPoint and a poster board and then went out and and talked about it. My student in particular talked about discrimination and it was really cool to watch the process of the uh this young student picking a topic, going through and looking at it, analyzing it, and then as getting feedback and and seeing that there's more to it than just the initial thought, developing it into a a full-on presentation to where it was today. And so I want to commend him and all the other students at Puente de Hojo for their fifth grade projects. Really cool and it was a lot of fun being a mentor. If any of you get approached to do so, I definitely recommend it. It's a lot of fun. And I think with that, I'll stop so that way I give Supervisor Horseman ten extra minutes.
And so uh. Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm saying to get out of here. Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, I just want to um I've been attending um and uh really excited to be at um have attend the graduations. Kaibato, what um the Navajo language and the way that the whole program was developed was so beautiful. Um and the just the children, the children or the students just um being so proud of introducing themselves in Navajo. I thought that was so neat. And we went to the page. So I just want to um give and then NAU, um we had our convocation there. I'm the Chair of the NAU Native American Advisory Board, so that we tend that. But I want to just um congratulate all the graduates from the the little tiny students to 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 college, universities. So just a big old congratulations to everyone and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I really appreciate it. It was great seeing you at the the Indigenous Graduation at NAU and uh also participating in the CCC graduation. It's really cool this time of year, seeing people having their success and completion and accomplishments uh through the year. I know that this weekend is also the Flag High Coconino Graduation and Summit High School. I'm really excited for all those families. Supervisor Horseman.
And I promise it won't be ten minutes. Um I I promised Pat Schreiber that I would announce that uh there are candidates for the Executive Director of the Arizona Commission of the Arts. And uh the candidates will be here in Flagstaff uh Wednesday, May twenty-second, from four to six. Uh the community, uh the board and the community is invited uh to come and meet the candidates and they're looking for input on uh the next Executive Director for the Arts Commission. And it will be at CCC at Lone Tree Road and as I said, from four to six uh tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any uh anything else or any other announcement before we adjourn this meeting? Okay, well, in that case, thank you, everyone, for for a great meeting. Uh we got done a little bit early, which is nice after so many intense bu- budget board meetings. And so thank you, everyone, and have a great day. We'll see you next week.